Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting into the Planning and Zoning Commission order. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission that are here this evening. To the far right is Jamie Hine, who is an alternate on the Commission. To Jamie's left is Jeff Kohan, Commission Member. And to my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, also a Commission Member. To the far left is Steve Allenson, an alternate on the Commission. And next to Steve is Rocco Madarazzo, who's our Secretary. As far as individuals from staff that are here this evening, at the lower table on the inside position is Synthony Kleis, excuse me, our Recording Secretary. And next to her is Casey Hand, who is our Town Planner. I'm Jim Spector, who happens to be the Chairperson of the Commission. Also, I'd ask everybody to please turn their cellphones off. Our first, actually, our first order of business is approval of some minutes. And I see our January 10, 2018. But looking at those minutes, there's only three individuals that were here that evening: myself, JP Benoit, who's not here, and Mr. Kohan. So I'm going to hold off on taking a motion on those minutes. And as far as the February 14, Casey, I didn't see that we had that in our packet, so I don't believe we obviously will act on that. Which brings us to, actually, just the first announcement before I get to our first order of business. On our agenda, we have Old Business, it's number four. It's a site plan for Ferdy Management Corp. at 155 E Street. That application's not going to be heard that evening because they're still waiting for approval from the In-N-Outlands Commission. And I will announce that Mr. Hine will be sitting in for Mr. Benoit this evening, so he'll be voting on all of the applications this evening. So it brings us now to our first item, which is a continuation of a public hearing. It's a special permit, existing offices to residential apartments, parking reduction, new restaurant, cafe, J-Hall at 50 South Main Street and 361 Center Street. The applicant would please begin coming forward to prepare for his presentation. And Mr. Madarazzo, if you plead, would please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have an inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand, Wallingford Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated March 2, 2018. Another inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand, Wallingford Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated December 21, 2017. An inter-office memorandum to Casey Hand, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated January 31, 2018. A copy of correspondence from Jeffrey Gordon to Casey Costello Hand, sorry, dated Friday, February 16, 2018. A memorandum to Casey Hand, Wallingford Town Planner, from Justin Rosetti, dated March 7, 2018. Correspondence from Robert Altermetis to Jeffrey Gordon, dated February 15, 2018. A correspondence from Jeffrey Gordon to Casey Hand, dated February 16, 2018. Additional correspondence from Jeffrey Gordon to Casey Hand Costello Hand. They're all listed here. Dated March 1, 2018. Additional correspondence from Casey Costello, Town Planner, and to Law Department, dated March 7, 2018. A memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner. And that would be it.
There should have been two more attachments that you just got.
Sorry about that. This is a site plan. Dated 11/31/17. And correspondence from Jeffrey Gordon to Casey Hand, dated March 9, 2018.
You guys gotta blow up some of your things so we can look at them. All right, the applicant, please introduce himself and continue with his presentation.
Sure. My name is Jeffrey Gordon. I'm President of Codispodian Associates, doing business in Orange, Connecticut. With me is our Architect, Milton Gregory Gru. What we were left with at our last meeting was to more clearly delineate and memorialize the cross easements. And actually, I think there's a correspondence that was today, one of the maps. So if the revision date is even smaller than the other date, so it would be dated today. And this is what you're looking at up here. These are the 24-foot-wide easements to the post office property and by the bank property opposite one another. And also, a one that would be to the post office property at the inside of the elbow of the property. And these easements are designated as floating easements, that they could be relocated if we find that somewhere in the future the post office becomes redeveloped somehow, and it is more advantageous to all parties to move them a little bit, that those easements could be adjusted in their location so as to better facilitate any redevelopment of the post office property or the bank property. So those would be memorialized in that fashion. We hope that that was, that kind of addresses the concerns of the Commission regarding cross-access easements. Also, I think we were trying to zero in on some sort of a formula that would allow the partial development or conversion of the office building to apartments, and timing and phasing to go with the development of the shell building, the commercial building, as they're looking for a tenant. We have started marketing that property for commercial use, hoping for an approval. It would be a little bit of a build-to-suit, finding the right tenant. What we did is we formulated in an email that, to Casey, how we thought that this could be done. Based on the conversations, as we understood them, the garden-level apartments were approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, so we were left with the ground floor and the upper floor apartments there. And at a 50% ratio, it basically becomes one floor of apartments that certificates of occupancy would be withheld until such time when the shell of the commercial building was substantially completed, waiting for fit-out.
Excuse me. When you're saying the garden-level apartments, what are you referring to?
Walkout level. The
Lowest level, is that correct?
Yeah. Or basement is not a great marketing tool, so garden levels is a walkout level there. And then, that was the ZBA approval, but then we have the main footprint. We have a ground floor level, and then we have an upper level. So we're proposing, the two proposals are basically whether it's the second floor that gets held back, or the ground floor that gets held back. I don't mean to put words in Mrs. Hand's mouth, but I think her preference is to hold back the main floor, because that would coincide more with a mixed-use building. We're fine with either option, whichever floor.
Casey, is that your, rather, Mrs. Hand, is that your thought pattern? Or I believe we were discussing before, we were talking about 50%, not talking about 50% of two floors, but 50% of the entire project.
Yeah. I mean, that's obviously at the Commission's
No, I understand. I mean, you represented that that was your, you agreed with that. I just wanted to clarify whether or not you agreed with it, and I don't believe you do.
Well, I think if we are going to split it up by floor, then the floor that should be the last to get the COs, or sort of the holdout floor, so to speak, I would recommend that that be the main level. Because if we didn't have the commercial building as a component of this, that's the level that we would look to have as the commercial level.
No, I understand that. But I believe that in our earlier meetings, you were, you were looking more towards 50% rather than floor and
Right. And I think at the last meeting, we had some conversations back and forth. And, I mean, the applicant in their email has made a representation about what, what that means from a development standpoint and a financing standpoint in terms of encouraging their development if it's by floor. Certainly, I can understand that that probably, from a procedural standpoint, makes it a little easier. But the original recommendation was a full 50%. Yeah.
Thank you. Turn it back to you. Any other additional comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, I guess part of the conversation was, you know, what is the leverage that the town has to make sure that the commercial building does take place? We were calculating eight, eight apartments would generate about $140,000 a year in rental. And we think that that's a, that's a pretty good holdback. I think that's a pretty good incentive there. Again, we prefer eight units to 11 units to be held back, obviously. Also, it's cleaner to take one whole floor. And as part of the discussion was that the six units on the lower level was basically already approved. We thought that we were in the ballpark of 50% of the remaining units that were the ones that being by special permit. So that was, that was our takeaway.
Okay. No, I appreciate that.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is Milton Gru, the Architect. Also, just from sort of a safety and construction process perspective, it certainly would be better to have an entire floor, whether it's the ground level from South Main, or it's the second floor. I don't think it matters that much. But that we not split up floors where we have the ability to have people living on the same floor with some unfinished units. I think it's far safer proposal to just have one whole floor that's not available for rentals versus part of a floor.
Okay. Anything else? Commission Members with any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I read the information we received over the weekend and just heard your comments. And I'm not shy to share with you, I'm having a little problem with a CO. So the, and I just want to clarify, the variance you receive for the ground level or garden-level units is contingent upon the parking. So you don't have a standalone approval, because you still need planning and zoning approval, correct? Because the way you were saying, you said we have ZBA approval, so those have already been approved. But they're approved with a parking plan that's before us.
My understanding is that is not part of the special permit, that these are by special permit. I could be wrong. That's my takeaway of it.
Okay. Okay. But so on the idea of the COs, so the, if I understand correctly from the last meeting and from the comments you made and the documentation we have, your request, because your letter of Friday alludes to something that has come before the Commission before. And it's your second-to-last sentence, which says, talking about the COs, "This overall building CO may seem like a minor issue, but it could be an issue with the lending institutions in releasing construction draws and the project funding." So I guess you're proposing that you want to be able to go, again, for, again, not a Commission concern, but an issue of the COs, is if the plan is for us to release the COs, as the project progresses, your letter here indicates that you are looking for a CO so you can get funding or financing. Is that, do I understand your letter correctly?
Well, construction mortgages, there are draws, there's releases, and there's usually inspections. And there's a logical breaking point for each of those. If you're doing a house, you know, the roof and the windows have to be in, then the siding. And so there's, there's different methodologies as to how that works out. I think our biggest question was that it's little nuanced to us to have a certificate of occupancy per apartment. I don't, haven't experienced much of that. The building has to be to a certain level where the fire, safety, health issues are in place. And then you're going to release apartments as you go on. If that's a customary practice in this, in this venue, that's fine. I just, not something that I'm tremendously experienced with. But again, we talk about logical places to break this off in order to get an inspection for release of funds.
Over the weekend, I was out at the site, and I walked around the site, both the South Main Street site and the Center Street site. And I, Mr. Chairman, is it okay to make comments like this, or versus questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just, I guess I'm a little concerned about this application as it pertains to the special permit criteria. Specifically, I'll get to the appropriateness of location or use. And there's a couple issues, and I know this is the third meeting we've had on this particular issue. But to me, walking the site, you have a standalone residential unit and a standalone commercial unit. It's not quite the mixed unit, the mixed use that, frankly, I would have envisioned if I was sitting in a college class, we're talking about planning and zoning and build. So it's two standalones, but it's a combined lot. So part of the criteria is you must have a combined, you must combine the two lots into, it's a single building lot with a single, two different addresses. But the mixed use are done separately, right? My concern is on the parking. And I wondered if you could, because the parking, the parking's not joined, the uses are standalone, but we're trying to tie it together through the issues of the CO. And your words, you said it's a nuance of how do we tie this together? My concern on behalf of the town, and certainly, you know, just a member of the Commission, is we need assurance that's a true mixed use. We can't have the residential and then have a, an empty shell of a commercial building versus a building where if it was all together, you know, first floor commercial, second floor residential, which is predominantly what we have in that area. And I wasn't sure if you could address that, because I think we're trying to address it as it pertains to the issues of the COs. But we need, we need both of these to work. We need, so for in order to be the true mixed-use project application as it pertains to the special permit, although it's not what I envisioned, I wonder if you could help me square that in my mind.
I appreciate that. Greg will take the first shot at this.
If I may. I think we made clear it wouldn't be what we would envision if it was a vacant lot either. This is a solution to an existing problem where you have essentially a three-story occupiable building that in its current, in current use and its current location is a white elephant. And so the idea, and frankly, this was done with a lot of input from Casey, was to change the use entirely of the existing building to something that was appropriate for that site and location, which would be residential. But then put a commercial component for the overall mixed-use development in its own location that would be more suitable and usable, frankly, by the public. And that was down at the streetscape along Center Street. So, I mean, this is not what we would normally envision either. And if you had a vacant site, which you may have, where, let's say, the town center, new regulations may, may apply, where you will get a three- or four-story building, and let's say the first floor is designated for commercial uses, retail, restaurant, whatever. And then you have upper floors which are residential. I'm involved in a number of those developments in other cities in the state, and I can tell you that sometimes you do wind up with vacant first floors for a much longer period than you're renting out the residential. We just happen just because of the physical constraints of what we already have, and it seems pointless to tear down an existing building to force something here, that we will have a separate commercial building. So it seems like a very fair solution to say, well, all right, if that's the way we need to do it, and it seems to make sense on this particular site that we do it that way, that then we hold back final, complete development of that floor in the residential building that theoretically would have been the commercial use in a single mixed-use structure. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I, this is what we have. And, you know, in speaking with, with Casey about this for months, quite some time ago, back and forth, it seemed like the most viable solution.
My comment is, I cut my teeth working for the New Haven Redevelopment Agency during redevelopment. And in 40-some-odd years, I don't think I've ever come across a parcel that is quite shaped like this. It feels like two separate parcels. It's got two separate frontages. It's got a topographical change of a full story in between. So it kind of blended itself to two separate structures. In an ideal world, the building would have been built right up to South Main Street. But, you know, we're trying to work with the cards that we have here. And I think we're, you know, offering a, again, as, as Mr. Gru said, we're offering as viable a situation as we can for a very unusual piece of property.
And the parking is enmeshed in that the lower level, or garden level, lowest-level apartment dwellers, they have an entrance on the Center Street end of the residential building. And if I'm one of them, I'm going to be parking down in that lower level, because I can just walk in the door and, you know, 10 feet away is my apartment. So really, the parking is blended between the two uses.
I appreciate your comments. And again, I thought, you know, I appreciate you mentioning 40 years you haven't seen something like this. One thing you noted I would note is I wish the building was inconsistent with others on South Main Street, because it is, it almost appears to be a setback. It's a rear building, and, you know, the neighbor is Webster Bank, and the current neighbor is the post office. And has things changed downtown? This is setback. So there's no way to, that's the way it is, and you're working with what you have. Am I correct, based upon the information, are you not proposing changing the facade of the building on South Main Street?
We're completely changing it. Our proposal is to remove that very dated mansard look and completely re-side the building and put an entry portico. Yes, we went over that the first hearing. And we also reviewed point by point in your incentive housing zone, how both architectural proposals actually address all of the goals and intentions of that incentive housing architectural guidelines.
Okay. And then if I could, the comments from the water and sewer, they're, it seems they're concerned about the lines for the commercial building. And it said, they wanted to know if the building could be, the existing lateral relocated so that they do not run beneath the proposed restaurant building. Has that been addressed? Because this comment is dated January 31.
Yeah, we have come up with a design that we worked with Mr. Kruger, where we are going to be replacing from manhole out on Center Street, under the building, to another structure with a ductile iron pipe. And then we have our grease trap for hopefully a proposed restaurant. And the manholes would provide an inspection manhole requirement. He came back with a sketch, and we incorporated that into our plan, and that would be part of the construction documents.
Okay. And then as far as the Center Street commercial building, can you describe to me how a delivery truck servicing a restaurant would make deliveries? Would they be parked on Center, or are you expecting them to enter into that driveway with cars to make a delivery? Because there's no, because I, living downtown and going to restaurants and knowing whether trucks deliver, you'd have a challenge for any type of truck to deliver by pulling in. And parking is tight in Center Street, so I wasn't sure what accommodations or what you've envisioned for that.
Well, depending on how things go after this hearing, as far as building height is concerned, they would be able to access underneath without any problem.
Fair enough. And then I guess my last question, Mr. Chairman, through you, is the, the roof, the rooftop usage of the commercial building on Center Street. If I understood correctly from your presentation, there'd be some type of wall or some type of screening, so the rooftop would be open air, but not open side? Am I understanding that correctly?
So on the commercial building, on the, the top floor, the third floor, we have, part of it is enclosed as part of the restaurant use, and the other half is an open roof deck for dining, which would be open on three sides: Center Street, the rear, and the post office side. With, and we show a pergola in the design.
Pergola. Excuse me. I know you have several maps up there. What do you have as far as, I know at our prior meetings, you showed us what those particular buildings were going to look like. Are those on the maps? And if they are, if you please show that for the commercial building, but then also what designs you're doing as far as refacing the, you know, the existing building, if you could also show that to please.
Right there.
I think the handheld mic's going up. If you could just, I will see what our, we're working on it.
So on, excuse me, Architectural Drawing A201, we, I had brought photographs of the existing building to show what, what the existing facade has. I mean, you look at it every day, so you're very familiar with it. But essentially, there's a brick veneer on the lower
Excuse me. If you could perhaps just get to the right of that, so people in the audience may be able to see, and maybe able to pick it up a little better on TV, too.
On the lower level, we have a brick, an existing brick veneer. And then on the upper level, there is this mansard facing that projects from the top floor with indentations for, for the windows. And this is currently clad in vinyl siding. And then, of course, along the longsides, you have a similar treatment there. So what we are proposing to do is keep the brick veneer, but completely remove this mansard projection, and, and re-side that upper story completely with a, essentially a composite siding, similar, or maybe the James Hardy product. So this would be like clapboard siding. And then use projections over the bands of windows to kind of give some shadow line and, and variation in the design with a material that would essentially be a composite metal panel that would match up with the metal panel we're proposing to use on the commercial building, so that we have some architectural ties between the two structures. As well, along the upper edge of the roof, we're proposing to use a metal coping here with a green accent color that would also be the same accent that we would have on the commercial building. And we are building out a, essentially a portico here that would come out with two columns to columns to, uh, cover the entry, because right now there's, there's no weather cover right now at, at those entry doors. And so, and this same treatment then would be done along the, uh, the longsides of the building as well. Then on the commercial building, on sheet A202, uh, basically what we've done is kind of used the, um, the, uh, to create the two blocks, the one block that we, uh, that we need for the drive-through of the cars and the access to the parking at the rear of the building, and, and of course, we need vertical access, uh, for the three-story building. So we were gonna put the stairs, uh, to the top, uh, right here on the front facade, so we'd be able to have three stories of glass, and, uh, and then have the dining area, one of the dining areas over the drive-through, and then above that have the, um, the pergola and the, and the railing for the, uh, the roof deck. This would be the facade that would face the, uh, and so this, these siding panels, these metal panels here that essentially just cover everything that's not glass would match the ones on those window projections on the residential building. And as you can see here, we're using, uh, green, uh, frames for the, the glazed curtain wall and the, the top of the building to match up again with the same color on the residential building. So there, there may be two structures, but we are trying to tie them somewhat architecturally together, so it looks like they, uh, they're part of the same development. And then this would be the facade that would face the, um, post office property, and, uh, seeing as how this is the property line, we're not allowed to have windows or openings that open into a space because you're on a property line, so there's fire issues with doing that. So we, we can have it open here where it's the drive-through. We don't have any occupied space, and we do have the, the roof deck here, so we're, we can keep that open, but this would just be, essentially be a change in, in color of the material that's being used there for the siding. And the same thing on the, um, a similar treatment to that on the Gallagher Travel Agency site, because again, we're, you're, when you're building to a property line, you're not allowed to have any, any openings, any windows. That's the, uh, the exterior design.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Mrs. Han, comments you may have?
Um, I think most of my comments have been addressed in the last couple meetings, and then in the conversation that has been had tonight. Um, I know at the last meeting, there was some question about, um, as discussed, the issuance of, uh, partial CO, so you do have a communication from our building official in there, um, and the town attorney did review that and indicate that, um, her, her indication was that she concurred with what was stated, um, by the building official, so, um, essentially the, the representation is that he, um, could and that we have, uh, issue partial COs, um, as provided that there was sign-off by the other, say, by Water and Sewer and the Fire Marshal, and as, um, sort of referenced earlier, um, provided that, that the building was safe for occupation. So even though they may not be able to get COs for all of the units, they, they, as indicated, will have to get the building to a certain point, I think, before people can actually be moving into the building. Um, so, uh, the, similarly to last time, um, I did up some sort of draft, um, motions or, uh, conditions to the motion for you. There were some things that came off of that because they were addressed in the subsequent plans that you've received. Um, the majority of those, um, the reason I provided proposed language for them is because, um, a lot of them have to do with the easements, um, that are around the proposed parking, um, and since this is a newer parking regulation and, um, some, there are some newer components in there, um, and there are several easements involved, um, those were included in there. Um, we did also, uh, as you'll note, there was, or as you know, there was some conversation about the landscaping to the front, um, and where the, um, potential future easements or interconnections would go. Um, when I discussed it with the applicant's representatives, um, the agreement was that those would essentially be made sort of floating, but we put them in a location that we think, or they put them in a location where they think was about what the commission was looking for. Um, so there are some conditions writ, written in regarding the maintaining of the landscaping and then the installation of the interconnections. beyond that, um, I, unless the commission has additional questions for me, I think we've, we've pretty much covered everything in the last few meetings.
Good. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the application? Please come forward, state your name and address and your comments, please.
Good evening. I'm Joe Mira. I'm with the Economic Development Commission, and we're strongly in favor of this project as presented this evening, uh, separating the main floor until the, uh, commercial shell is, is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, yes?
Seattle Castle Grande, 25 Turnberry Road. I am, I don't know where to begin with this. I don't know whether to begin, as someone who's been involved in the development of the downtown since 1986, I don't know whether to talk about it as a resident, I don't know whether to talk about it as a, someone who owned a restaurant for eighteen years, or as a realtor. I'm opposed to this on every level. First of all, I can't understand why the ZBA ever allowed the approval. I, I don't know the rationale behind the approval of these, um, (sigh) I can't, and I can't think of the right word, subterranean apartments, that's the only word I can think of. Um, it's not allowed anywhere. I had a property on Main Street, North Main Street, that had such a decline in the topography that the lower level was not only walkout, but we had five-foot windows there, and we were told that you cannot have a lower-level apart residential unit on North or South Main Street, and to my knowledge, there aren't any. But of course, I know it was approved by the ZBA. I'd like to know under what, and I'm not expecting an answer now, under what rationale the ZBA gave that variance? I can't imagine what it would be. So I, I'm opposed to that, number one. Number two, uh, Mrs. Han just informed me that you raised the number of units in the incentive housing zone from twenty-six to thirty-two, and that's on an acre. I'm assuming, based on the map, that this entire parcel is three-quarters of an acre. I might be wrong on that, but I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt that the South Main Street piece is half an acre. If that were true, and you're allowing twenty-two units there, you should allow forty-four units in the incentive housing zone. It's way too many units for that piece of property, I think. Uh, number three, or might be number four, I, there's so many things that I have against this that I just don't know exactly how to enumerate all of them, but, um, I'm thinking that since I've been involved in the downtown, we've strived to have commercial on the first level and residential above it, and these gentlemen are talking about how they could work to combine the property. They refer to it as a white elephant. There would have been a simple answer. Do two buildings, and each would have commercial on the first floor and residential above it. So they could have done that on Center Street, and they could have done that on South Main Street. There's another reason why I don't understand why they're making one totally residential, or why it was approved in any way, and why we need this, um, totally commercial building on, um, Center Street. I want to, before I forget, I want to talk about the, um, facade improvements. Instead of trying to make the two buildings compatible, I feel they should have tried to make each building compatible with the street that it's on. The building that's there has been an eyesore for years. It doesn't fit into South Main Street at all, and when I looked at the rendering in Casey's office, I didn't see that there was much difference. It would have been nicer if the facade improvements on Main Street were in keeping with the surrounding properties on Main Street. Hopefully someday we'll get rid of the post office, and then something nicer can, nicer looking can be there, and then they could have done something that fit in with Center Street. We were all thrilled when the Dean Atally Building across the street, which was the former police station, and had those metal pieces in the front. Everyone was thrilled when the Dean Atallys bought it and bricked it over because it was so out of keeping with what, with the flavor of downtown, which is basically Victorian. So I think that you should really consider some of these aspects. I think that, and I just heard them say that eight units, I believe, and I think they're six hundred and fifty square feet or thereabouts per unit, okay? A hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's fifteen hundred dollars a unit for six hundred and fifty square feet. I don't know of any units that big that were that small, that are getting that kind of money. I think they would be, I'm speaking as a realtor now, I think they would be very difficult to rent in the center of Wallingford. Um, so I think that's a concern. As far as the restaurant, I don't think you should absolutely approve this until they have a tenant, a signed tenant. Restaurants are very hard to rent. We had brothers that was on the market for years, which was turnkey, no takers, not for lease or sale. We have one across town that's been on the market for a while, which was just removed from the market, and that's turnkey, that's walk, walk-in, and not excessively priced, and that is not moving, in fact, to the point where they had just taken it off the market. So to build a shell of a building hoping for a tenant, if that's a component of this approval, that's something you have to consider, because it may never be rented, and you may just have an empty shell there. So for all those reasons, and I'm sure I have about twenty more, I just can't think of them now, I'm opposed to the approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members from the public who'd like to speak, yes?
Debbie Gross, 114 Long Hill Road. A question, if you could please clarify, you described something with a hundred and forty thousand dollars and the eight units, and you called it a holdback. What is that? Because...
I, I think we probably want the applicant to explain that, as they brought that up. If you'd please, uh, explain exactly what you were talking about.
Well, we were basically talking about if you don't rent eight units for a year, you take your monthly rent and you multiply it times the number of units. We're talking, um, somewhere between a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year, uh, if those are not...
See, they're not, it, might be just, you know, a little simpler. They're not talking, as far as a holdback, there's nothing really being held back. They're basically, it's the lost opportunity of renting those units.
Okay. That's what I was, I didn't understand what that meant. It sounded like the town was getting some benefit of that. I, I didn't, I didn't quite understand it, so it's basically his opportunity or his loss.
Yeah, it's just the opportunity cost, yeah.
And I have to echo what Mrs. Trudinsky was saying regarding the calculation of that. Can you please describe how you arrived at fifteen hundred dollars a month for six hundred and fifty square foot, um, apartment, when I haven't quite seen that yet in town?
Sure. Perhaps you'd like to explain that.
We were looking in the, uh, fourteen hundred dollar a month range for brand-new apartments with granite countertops, uh, with a, um, laundry facilities, storage facilities available, uh, wood flooring, so basically it's not a, not an apartment that really is competitive with other, uh, older apartments in the area. It's something that would be brand-new, and we think that there would be a market for it.
Sure. That's, I, I don't see that. I obviously seen apartments and places that have been highly renovated with the amenities you've just described, but I don't see it commanding anywhere near that. Love to see it, but I don't see it realistically commanding that. Um, one other question, if you don't mind.
Oh, absolutely.
Regarding the, uh, rooftop restaurant, um, I'm trying to envision that in the midst of, I know it's in the midst of some commercial and, but also in the midst of some residential, and the consideration that would be for the residents that are surrounding that behind and such. It's obviously, I don't know at what altitude that would be, but that obviously would create, I'm guessing, some noise and some echoing effects besides some visibility issues regarding the neighbors. So I don't know how that's being considered and into your plans and, uh, how that was approved. Um, I'm just concerned about that.
Okay. I, I think as far as the, the height of the rooftop restaurant, it's what, thirty feet, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's on the third floor, so the floor of it, uh, say, is twenty-two to twenty-four feet, um, because as we mentioned, we will be, um, doing the final design for it after the, um, increased height in this zone is, is approved, because we'd like to have about eleven or twelve feet before, between floors. So it'll probably be about twenty-two, twenty to twenty-four feet, uh, above the ground. Um, outside dining is a permitted use, uh, whether it's on the ground or it's on a roof deck, uh, of, of the building. Um, so I, I don't know how else to explain that.
Is that portion been approved, or is it part of this approval process? Is that rooftop part of it?
That's part, yes, that's part of, that is part of the application, that's correct.
Okay. I just think that, um, I'm not sure how that's gonna quite fit versus some of the ground dining is obviously temporary, um, and in within the part of the really commercial area where being on a rooftop again with residential behind it, um, I don't live back there, but if I did, I think I would be concerned about that, and I guess, um, I'd have to say I would oppose to see that, um, in that area, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other members from the public, yes?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I didn't come here for this tonight, but I have a question, because I received a letter in the mail last week about property I own downtown, and it's telling me that they're gonna change my zone from one to CA six, which this building is in, and it's telling me I can't have residential on the first floor because of the way the zone's gonna be changed. Yet, you seem to be approving a large piece right in the center of town to residential. So will I be able to do the same thing, just get it changed?
No.
Then how, then how are you approving this for downtown with all first-floor residential? That's my question. And, and as Ms. Casgrandi said, um, low ground, s, you know, so, a basement, um, I don't, I didn't think basement was allowed. I have properties in town, and I have wa, I have literally a regular cellar door, one of my houses downtown, and I could walk right out of it, but it's a basement. I can convert it to an apartment. I have two, I have two egresses there. Would that be allowed? I'm just confused at how one person is getting allowed to do something and somebody else can't do it. That's my question.
Sure. Again, I think it was explained at the lower level, the garden, that was approved by the, that was approved by the ZBA. That was their approval.
Now, do you have to approve it?
Well, they had the approval, they, they've given the approval of that, so they have the approval for residential on the, on the lower level.
So you have no say in that?
Well, we have a say on this application, but as far as saying that you cannot have the residential on the garden, the garden level, the lower level, that's been approved by the ZBA.
So if, and just, so on a side then, so if I wanted to get an apartment built in my basement, I would just go to ZBA, and if I have two egresses and doors, I can get an improvement for a basement and get charged a thousand dollars a month and make a profit on the property?
Good luck with that, but I, you, anyone, I don't, I don't mean to be, you know, I'm a wise guy about it, but anyone can go to the ZBA for any type of a variance. It's up to the ZBA to make a decision.
Do you, as Ms. Casgrandi said, do you know the, the reason, or these gentlemen would know then, what was the exception? What was the hardship that was allowed, that allowed you to build in the basement?
Mrs. Hand, are you aware of what the hardship may or may not have been?
I, I believe what was discussed was, was in part the change in the elevation and the secondary defect from, I, I just would say this, I think from a planning standpoint, we want to see a building out at a, on the road, but this is a building that is already there and is already not out on the road. So getting, having commercial out on the road in exchange for residential set very far back from the road, I believe is still consistent with what we're trying to do with these regulations.
That, that's fine, but what was...
So I think the character of the, the, the location of the existing building probably played into that, but I, I wasn't at that meeting, so and I don't know.
Well, then these gentlemen might know, then they were there. What, what was the hardship that allowed you to have a basement apartment?
Were you aware of the, uh, did you make, did you make, I guess the first question is, did either one of you gentlemen make the presentation to the ZBA?
I, I made the presentation, and, uh, and, and essentially, it's, it's what, uh, Mrs. Hand just said.
Because they want it developed?
Because the, because first floor, uh, in, in the zone was, um, required to be non-residential, so we could not have, uh, so we had to, for, for starters, decide which was the first floor, um, on a building that has two street fronts with walkout, and so the, um... And so the, the view of the ZBA was, well, it wasn't a street level anyway, or it shouldn't be the street level that is considered commercial. And, and so they approved the, the six apartments on that lower level.
I didn't understand.
I, you know, I don't have the record in front of me, and I think it's not really appropriate for me to try and reconstruct what was presented about a year ago to the zoning board of appeals. I'm sorry. I wasn't prepared to answer that.
I was just listening to this because I got this letter for tonight's, I don't normally come to planning and zoning meetings, and I called Ms. Costello last week. I didn't know what was going to be on the agenda, but I'm hearing this, and I have property right near there, and I'm confused because you're telling me I can't do something, and you're allowing this building to do what you're telling me I can't do, and they're more than a couple hundred yards from me. So I'm, I'm totally confused. Thank you.
Other members from the public?
Good evening. Tim Ryan from the Economic Development Commission. This is exciting. We have a development project in our town center that we've been working on for, coming up on two years. This is a culmination of, of collaboration, cooperation, recognizing that this property is unique in its own way, where it's placed on the site. I think that the property owner, the town planner, and the various commissions have worked collectively to try to make something happen in our town center that I think will enhance the center of town and the experience and the, and the growth that we've experienced in downtown. So I sense the tone of the meeting has changed to a direction that I'm not comfortable. I think this is a very good project. I have confidence in the owner and the, and his team that they will build what they've presented, that they will build. And we, as, as Mr. Mira stated earlier, the Economic Development Commission fully supports it, and I would ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members? Before I have you come up again, is there anyone else who would like to speak? And we'll go for round two.
I'm not saying this in any accusatory way, but based on Mrs. Hand's answer to Mr. Gross about the hardship on the ZBA, are you saying that the Planning and Zoning Commission worked hand-in-hand with the ZBA to get this approved, to get this variance?
Absolutely not.
Well, she just said that this is something that we're looking for. In answer to his question, we're willing to allow, I'm paraphrasing, these basement apartments that they're not allowed, that are not allowed anyplace else in order to get this property developed, in order to work with a plan that I don't understand, and I've been very focused on the downtown since 1986. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, how you're saying, Casey just said, we're very comfortable, I'll use that word, with this, having lower-level apartments approved, granted this variance with the ZBA?
If I, if I could just interrupt you for a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just so I can be, you know, clear as far as my initial answer, when you asked if the Planning and Zoning Commission was involved with all of this, to best of my knowledge, there was no members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that took part in any of the discussions, any of the meetings with the applicant. Now, as I think Mr. Ryan indicated, and I can assume is correct that the, or at least I think is correct, that the Economic Development Commission had meetings with the, with the applicant as well as our planning department. So there could have been, you know, those meetings, but again, your initial question was, was the Planning and Zoning Commission...
I shouldn't perhaps have used the word the Planning and Zoning Commission. I, I shouldn't have said that. But based on Casey's answer, it seems as though, instead of saying, well, these are our regulations, you've got to prove to us why we should give a variance, the planning, the various people in the town, let me put it that way, were willing to forego the regulations that are in, in existence to get this downtown. And I don't think it's going to be of, of that much of a benefit to the downtown. I really don't think bringing another restaurant downtown is going to do what we've tried, what we have tried, been trying to do for years. Bring some, bring commercial downtown that will benefit the downtown. And what you need to do in order to do that, and here I'm, I don't want to step on my own points, you have to bring residential downtown, but you have to bring residential downtown that will support certain kinds of businesses. Certain kinds of businesses come when there are people who require those businesses. You don't put a restaurant there hoping that you're going to bring people downtown who are going to support other kinds of businesses. I just didn't like the flavor of that, like it was done before it was, before it was, in a way that it shouldn't have been done. And I remain opposed to this, and I think that if it goes forward in, in the years to come, I'll be proven right.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I'm right. We still, if, could, we have still a couple of members of the public, then I'll allow you to...
Joe Mira, I'm speaking as a resident of the town and as a business, businessperson. A few comments were made, I think, out of context. Something to keep clear, we are not, this, from what I understand, this applicant is not being approved for residential solely in that building. It's a mixed-use property. It does involve commercial property. It just happens to be in this location. The commercial property is not attached. That's, that's got to be made clear. It's not just a residential property. Again, it's a unique property. It's been, what some people have referred to as a white elephant. It's been vacant. The town is losing money. With the rent rolls that this, this property will be bringing in, it will bring the type of people that we're looking for to frequent the restaurants and, and the growth of the downtown. And you also have to look at this project as part of the long-term vision of the, the town, not the short-term backward thinking of some, some town people. This is a long time coming. Downtown, from meetings that I've been at, there's a lot of development going on, and we're going to need residential property like this. This building really has limited use. We finally found somebody who can foresee the use of this building and was able to put together commercial property with the residential property. I think for the tax rolls, the benefit of the downtown businesses, and for the downtown vision that we all have, this is a good, good unit. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's no more members of the public who'd like to speak on the application, I believe the applicant would like to make some comments on some of the comments that were made.
I've had a second thought about that, and I'll, I think I'll just let those comments stand.
Okay. Mrs. Hand, any final comments that you would like to make? Any commission members, any final comments that they would make, like to make on the application or to the applicant? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I'm rereading, rereading the comments from the February 14th meeting. So I'm trying to think, again, I'm having, I'm struggling with the CO issue, okay? Because in the meeting in February, we talked about, you know, the town would have to enforce it, potentially suing and, and kicking people out. So we're, we're not there because that's all, that's behind us now that we have the comments from the town attorney, correct? So the phasing of this project, could you tell me exactly, step-by-step, the ideal plan? In, in briefness, what, what would be part one, what would be part two, and what would be part four?
Part one would be because the, the existing building is there, there'd be kind of a two-pronged, seeing as how there's two separate structures, the way, the way I envision it going is that we will first be doing our final design because there's not a whole lot of final design left to be done on the conversion of the existing building to residential apartments and applying for building permit to do that work. At the same time, as, as you're aware, the owner of the property has begun actively marketing the commercial building, and we, once we, once there is a higher height limit allowed for, for the buildings in this zone, then we would embark on doing the final design for the, for the commercial building as well. Seeing as how the fit-out for the residential will take very little time physically to do that, those apartments will be ready for occupancy before the commercial building would be completed. So that's, that's why we're having this discussion on what would be the leverage for the town to ensure that the commercial building is completed, at least so that it's ready for possible tenants, that there's at least a shell there, similar to as if you had a first, a vacant first floor on a multi-story building, where the street level reuses that were not yet occupied or rented out to commercial tenants yet. So as far as the CO goes, I mean, the whole building will have sprinkler system, all the mechanicals and, and the structure and everything will, will be all done. Of course, the whole exterior of that building will be completed. And then whatever floor the commission deems appropriate to hold back individual COs for, or for that, for that floor itself, that's fine, but I will still make sure, we will still have to have the central corridor, the stairwells, the elevator, the life safety systems will all be complete. So, you know, whether or not the kitchens are complete or bathrooms are 100% or things like that, that'll be sort of academic, but those, you know, and those apartments that are quote-unquote "held back," that may be the case where they're not 100% completed, if they can't be occupied or rented out yet. And then, once we have the shell in place for the commercial building, regardless of whether there is a tenant onboard yet or not, then the town would be in a position to then release, the certificates of occupancy, zoning would be able to sign off on COs, so the building official, the fire marshal could sign off on the COs for the balance of the apartments in the residential building.
Okay. If I could through you, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could be just very basic, okay? So i- if you secure our approval, which floor would be done first for the residential? The ground floor, the, the subterranean, the, the one or two? That's, that's, what I'm trying to get to is...
Depends on which floor you tell us. You, you tell us, because you're, you're going to tell us which floor we, we won't be able to finish 100%.
That's okay.
The other ones is what we will finish.
Okay. I, I guess because the way, the terminology I'm thinking of is phasing, because the phasing of this is, is where I'm having, is having a tough time because we all acknowledge, it's been said, and we talked about it, you have one use and another use, we're looking for mixed use, and because they're, they're going to be done separately is, is where I'm having a tough time. So if I heard correctly, if we said, okay, so 50% of residential can be done, that's a floor and a half. Is that correct? Would that be, in essence, where you're talking?
It's 50% of what? So in our, in our approach, we would prefer it be 50% of the upper floors, which would be eight apartments, so it'd be one whole floor. There is no floor of 11 apartments. And as I mentioned before, from a practical point of view, I would rather not be splitting up floors where some are occupied and some are not.
And I, in, in candor to you, I'd rather not split up the use, but that's how it's coming in. So, you know, and, and because my concern is the residential be done, and we'll have an empty shell of a building on Center Street. We're right in...
You'd have an empty shell of a first floor on a multi-story building if, if you'd, if the restaurants or retailers didn't, you'd have for-lease signs and finished apartments above. If you go to downtown New Haven, Stamford, Hartford, you will see blocks of those.
And through the chair, obviously, it's the applicant's desire to lease the building because building a building and having it sit vacant where he's not collecting any rent is not to his advantage. So he is going to market it strongly because he needs that to have a complete project.
I'm just thinking about something as you're, as you're asking. I think, so I think everybody's on sort of the same page about, or at least it seems like maybe the direction we're going potentially is, so a certain number of units would be granted a CO before perhaps anything is done with the commercial, the commercial building. What I think I, I maybe need clarified from the commission too, if you do take an action on this tonight with that motion, is at what point the CO for the last set of units would be approved? So typically, the, typically, the, the building could be, if, if we had a single mixed-use building, for example, you could have the building completed and the residential units would get rented out, and you don't necessarily, I mean, a building, a tenant can come and go in any building. So the, the recommendation or what we had talked about, I think, was the CO upon, the CO of the last set of units upon completion of the shell of the building, which would not necessarily equal a full fit-out at that time. But I just want to make, I'm, I'm, you know, I think that point should be clear, and if, if that's not where the direction you're going, then that should be reflected in the motion.
Thank you. Other commission members? Mr. Hand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've had a sign up there now at the property for a couple of weeks. Have you had any bites?
Nibbles.
Nibbles, okay. Because, because one of the things that struck me while I was out there is how narrow that lot is. And as I sat there, you know, at least the, the portion that comes out to Center, to Center Street there, where you're going to put, you're proposing putting the commercial building. And quite frankly, I was having a hard time envisioning it because you're going to try to fit two-car, a two-way driveway, and then to the left of that is going to be the, the restaurant portion of it.
And above.
I mean... Excuse me?
And above.
And, and a, a buffer, is that...
And above.
Oh, and above, okay. I misunderstood what you were saying.
The portion on the ground floor is going to be narrow, as we see.
So, you know, the problem I'm having with the project, and, and I, I'm certainly willing to listen to what you have to say, and I could be sold, okay? So I'm, I'm not committed to my position, but the problem I'm having is that I personally feel as though we're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. And I'm, I'm a little nervous that we're jumping at a project to fill a space that hasn't been filled in a while, instead of being patient and, and seeing what develops in that particular area as time moves on. And I get nervous that, you know, we're, we're sort of jumping the gun here a little bit because we're so eager, as a town, to have this space filled. And I, I sort of wonder that if we wait a little bit, whether we, a better project would come along or a, or another opportunity would come along as other areas of the town, that downtown area develop. And so that's, that's really sort of the, the problem I'm having right now. Because I do feel as though, you know, like I said, when I, when I took a look at that, that area on Center Street there, I, I, I look at this very narrow building, and I'm saying, are we really kind of just jumping at this because...
It is a downtown district. It, it does have an urban flavor to it. When you have a zero lot line, when you're trying to have a facade, a treatment right up by the street, you're going to find that. Somebody wiser than me once at one of these hearings said, you know, why is it that the best project was either the, the one that was proposed in the past or the one that we might get in the future, but not the one we're looking at tonight? And there's a lot of truth to that. There was a, I believe there was a commercial use on that lot way back when. We know that the ground floor is narrow. It's going to have what would be almost like a takeout counter, an elevator, staircase, but the main activity is on the upper level, which spans over it, and that's really where the, the, the use comes. To have a parking lot and to try to get a retail use up by the street, you can't do both unless you have the parking lot access go underneath. I always think back to Benefit Street in Providence, where the houses were right up on the street there, and there would be mews, alleyways, tentways, they used to call them for a horse and buggy that would go through the building to the yard in the back where the person built the house for his kids in the future. And that's kind of what you have when you have one of these old... And that's kind of what you have when you have one of these old urban and narrow parcels. It is a challenge design-wise, but we think with the, the town center district, you have these kind of narrow parcels to contend with. I have a, an office building that's 160 feet back from South Main Street. The back of this commercial building is going to be about 195 feet, the back of that to this converted apartment building. So they are set back from, you have one building set way back to the street that doesn't function for office or retail, and then you have the other one that will function, that's narrow, but it is quite a distance from the apartment building. So again, we thread the needle here. I think that this is a, a good solution that really meets the spirit of what you're trying to accomplish downtown, and it is challenging design, it really is, no question about it. But I think that there are not any other rooftop terraces around. Now, it's not necessarily going to have to be a restaurant, there could be other uses that could go here. We just happen to think that that might be one of the best ones that could come into a place like this.
And if I may, you have an existing property owner who is proposing permitted uses in that zone, and is complying with all of the, all of the requirements for that zone and all of the requests of, of your professional staff here in town. In all due respect to the current property owner, he needs to move on with the property and develop it. So I don't know what he can wait for. He has an empty building there that he wants to develop, and he wants to develop the commercial component. And frankly, we're similar to the economic development folks that spoke, we are excited about it as well, and we think that it, that it really will work out well. We wouldn't propose this, what you might consider to be a unique solution here on Center Street if we didn't think it was viable. We wouldn't be spinning where our wheels, he wouldn't be paying us money to do this. And, and we think that this is a very viable solution.
Yeah, and let me be clear, you know, I have full faith that the owner is proposing this in a legitimate and serious fashion, so I, I don't have any doubt about that. So, thank you.
I mean, we're hoping that we're the start of it, instead of waiting for something else to start things downtown, that we're, we're the ones that become the impetus for more other developments.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Cohen?
Just a comment and then really a question for Casey if I can. You did answer my question about the commercial use, it doesn't necessarily have to be a restaurant, and, you know.
You have a whole list of permitted uses.
Right, right. So just, you know, because we've really been talking about a restaurant, that'd be, yeah.
We think that that's the most viable and the best idea for, for that spot, but.
Right. But doesn't have to be a restaurant. And if I could, for Casey, I'm still just a little hung up on the certificate of occupancy. Because it sounds like, you know, whatever, you know, criteria we come up with, if it's, you know, not met, is there a timeframe that we will give the applicant? Or is it just kind of open-ended?
In regard to issuance of the certificate of occupancy?
Yes, say they only, you know, rent seven apartments. And, you know, how, how long do we give them before, you know, something kicks in where they, you know, we want the commercial piece built?
Well, I, I think that, that is the purpose of, or the purpose of the suggestion of withholding the other certificates of occupancy, so that's, because that's really your, your hammer, so to speak, or your way of ensuring. I think what we talked about, as you know, in previous meetings, is that I was, you know, I, I wasn't frankly comfortable with just sort of agreeing to it, to not occupying the units, because I, I don't think that's enforceable. I think that would be the case where we end up, where we could end up with a problem. But if we can withhold the certificates of occupancy indefinitely, if that's the condition, so that would be the, that would be the tool used to ensure that the commercial building gets built. Now, I will say, if after an approval is good for five years, with up to five years of extensions from you guys, but presumably they would have an interest in wanting to rent out the rest of those units, or that's, that's the thought anyhow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commission members? Mr. Matarazzo?
Just a couple of statements here. I think it's great that this property is being looked at and potentially has some goal in mind for, for, for use. I think we all agree it's a difficult property. One question I had as to the commercial piece, was there any thought given to just adding on to this existing building and bringing it more towards South, South Main?
I think the desire was to have something right out to the street, for a, for a streetscape. So that was why that was the solution.
If we also were to say, add on to South, the South Main portion, then there'd be no parking up there.
I didn't know if you're, the parking where the commercial building was going.
Right, so then, you know, on that lower level, you'd have parking for that upper, which we're trying to make pedestrian-friendly or favor South Main, that, that would, I think from a design perspective and use of the building, that would be not too attractive either. And, and it'd be a huge disconnect for people on, because the building would look like it's on South Main, but all of the parking would essentially be on, on Center Street. Take a long time for people to figure that one out.
I don't think it'd take them that long. I mean, we've got people parking behind the police station now to access all the businesses downtown.
Also, the height, you've got to understand too, that, that building was built in the late 60s, I believe it was, or the early 70s. The height, the heights are fine for residential uses, but they're no good for commercial anymore. So if we tried to extend horizontally that building and make something work though commercially, we wouldn't want to be matching up with the heights, the floor heights in that existing building. I mean, that would be a real, in my mind, that would be a mess.
Well, I've, I've seen it done before between two buildings where you have some steps, step ups between buildings and floor heights. You know, my thought was, looking at this quick, was the, the front half of it would bring you more into compliance with having the lower levels being used for commercial space against South Main. Possibly splitting the building and utilizing the back, again, still for residential. And possibly with that parking, if it was adequate parking to meet the new dimensions and the occupancy, using that sub-level, being that it comes out to the back of that parking lot as commercial, it might appease a lot of people. But that's just me looking at it quick. Again, I haven't been here for the last couple of meetings, I apologize to the rest of commissioners, but some kind of coming in on this late. Last comment I would make, upon approval, if you get approval, I'd like to see something more aesthetically pleasing than kind of a starched building. It, it just seems architecturally it could be more appealing for that downtown area, taking to some of the comments from the public, as far as downtown and the Victorian era appeal.
Thank you. Mr. Fins, as you said, you had one last question, or maybe one or two.
One. This is through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner, because the requested height of the approved commercial building may be raised to blank feet. Is there a number that we should be discussing?
I would direct that back to the applicant, but I, I mean, it's based on what may change, based on your current regs, but I don't, I would ask them exactly what they're proposing. I know the fire marshal's was looking for an increase in two to three inches for their clearance.
Would we have to specify that, or just make sure that it complies if the, if the height is raised in the next zone, just make sure it complies?
This is a special permit, so we'd like to know.
If we could propose a range at this point, I would say between 35 and 40.
Does that mean a regulation? It's got to be specific.
What's the, what's it proposed at now?
Right now, we have the roof at 36. I believe we have it at 36 feet. We would also want to screen mechanical equipment. Maybe we would come back, with, with the height being raised, we might come back and put a parapet on it, so it'd be a little taller instead. So perhaps you want to say between 35 and 40, instead of a magic, you know, final number or something.
So a 40.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Casey, just a question, our current building height is what?
30.
30. So, yeah, that's, so we're approving something up to 40 feet, but right now it's 30 feet. I know we have, we're looking to do perhaps some, some changes or coming up with our town center regulations that would allow for that higher height, but at this particular point in time, our current regulations specify 30, so how would we then be able to save up to 40 feet? I can see if we approve our town center regulations, they can come back and then look for the higher height, but.
It would essentially be a statement allowing, allowing an approval if the reg gets approved. What they're proposing is currently compliant, so they have a compliant building right now. If you, I mean, it's essentially what was discussed was the idea that I would be able to sign off as essentially an administrative approval if the reg gets changed for the higher building. I mean, we can make them come back, if that's the preference.
Okay.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm uncomfortable with that, Casey, only because even though it's the next application is downtown, it's their first.
They, right, so they would not have an approval for the taller height. If the new height gets approved, the rec, the suggestion is that I would be able to approve it administratively. If you don't want to do that, then we won't do that.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, through you, I would be, because right now, tonight, at this hour, they're applying under the current reg, so I would not be in favor of extending our regs on a potential future action. And much like any other application, whether they were here tonight or last year, they, anyone who wants to vary what they do would have to come in under the new regs.
Mr. Chairman, that was our understanding too. We, we're showing a 30-foot-high building that complies, and it was our, our, our thought that if the commission raises the height in that zone, that we will come back with just the modification of this, of this permit, asking to raise our height as well and show you the new elevations.
Exactly. I thought that that was the understanding also, when, I think probably at the first meeting when we were discussing this.
Yeah.
Any other commission members? I guess I'll just make a couple of comments. What?
Steve, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, just one quick question. I heard from the public, there was talk about 650 square feet as the residential units size, but is that the, are they all, all the units proposed to be 650, or is there going to be a variation?
No, that's what the public said, but that's not what's on the plans. They're all different sizes. If you want, I can go through what all the sizes are.
Sure. Just please give a brief overview. Thank you.
And the range is 634, 650, 599, 625, 604, 626. So that, that's basically the range. There's one that's as small as 524. There's, there's a range.
Thank you.
I think it goes up to about 755.
Excuse me?
They go, they go up to 755, those back ones.
Yeah, there, there is one that's 755 square feet.
Okay, so the, just the, follow up, the garden level apartments, are those under 650?
Those are 634, 626, 626, 650, 599, 569.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
I guess from my perspective, I, when I'm looking at this project, I think certainly it's been a, it's a challenging piece of property, and I'm looking at it really, I think all the, most commission members, as a mixed-use component. And that's something that I think is attractive, and I think it's attractive, quite frankly, for the, you know, for the town. I think as we, we've been stated before, you know, with this, with this particular property, it's sat idle for I'm not sure how many years. And this project, is it the most ideal project for it? No, there's probably a lot of other things that, you know, someone would like to see happen on this property, but is that realistic and a viable, viable option? I would tend to think not. I certainly commend the applicant for, you know, being creative and coming up with what they're proposing, and also as far as with our Economic Development Commission and working with them to look to try to get this property developed. Again, it's been idle for, you know, extended period of time. My issue comes back to how many certificates of occupancy could be issued until the, the shell of the building is, the shell of the commercial building is completed. I understand what your gentlemen are saying, it makes it easier to have the garden level, and then the second floor have, have those developed first, and then have the, the main level, the main street level, have that left vacant until the shell is, until the shell is developed. I understand your, you know, your opportunity cost and all of that that goes into that. However, I still come out to, I would much rather see coming back to what was proposed or what I felt originally was more appropriate, to have simply 50%. You can have, in, in my mind, to have the garden level, your six units there, to have those being able to be occupied, to have the second floor, the upper floor, having five units there, you know, completed to be occupied. So you'd still, you're still going to have three units, I believe would be left on the second floor, plus then eight units on the, on the main street level, to be not, not occupied until you have the, you know, the commercial, commercial building, you know, constructed. I know that may create some issues for you, I appreciate that, but to me, I think it creates more incentive to, you know, to, to have something done on the commercial building. As Mr. Cohen, you know, indicated, we're, we're talking about a restaurant, but it, maybe a restaurant doesn't happen, and there's another type of commercial use that the, that the applicant can find to put onto the property. So that would be, you know, my position as far as how to break that out. I think our, Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, but both our building inspector or our building officials, as well as our corporate counsel indicated that clearly that's an option that can, you know, that can take place as far as the, the 50% on that. So that's my position. I don't know if you'd like to respond to that or not?
I, I think we've.
I think we've, exactly, I think we've, we've gone back and forth on this quite a bit. So if there's no further comments from commission members, or any further comments from our town planner?
No, other than, so we're going to just strike condition number four, and then obviously you'll insert the, the proposed residential certificates of occupancy and whatever other conditions you decide on.
Yeah, if there's a motion to approve it.
If there is a motion to approve, yes.
Yes, Mr. Fins.
Is there a bond amount?
I will, that will have to be, to be determined based on those final plans we got.
If there's no further comments from the applicant and no further comments from the commission, I'd entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to close a public hearing on special permit application for 50 South Main. application for fifty South Main and three sixty-one Center Street.
I have a motion to close our public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, moving on. Do we have a motion on the application?
Mr. Chairman, based upon the totality of the record, I move that the commission approve a special permit, residential use not on the first floor, reductions in parking requirements for J. Hall to convert the existing office building into twenty-two residential apartments and to construct a five thousand nine hundred and thirty square foot commercial building at fifty South Main Street and three sixty-one Center Street. As shown on plans entitled Proposed Site Develop, plans fifty South Main and three sixty-one Center Streets, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated November thirtieth, twenty seventeen, December eighth, twenty seventeen, revised to two five eighteen and two twenty-seven eighteen, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the two properties are to be merged. Number two, designated public parking spaces shall be posted via signage and marked on the property. The nature of such postings and markings to be approved by the town planner and the town engineer. These spaces shall be striped in accordance with the color of the public parking spaces in the town center area, currently green. Number three, the following easements and requirements for the subject property shall be posted on the land record. Three A, easement to the public for access slash travel slash parking in the area of the publicly dedicated parking spaces as shown on final plans and indicating the number and location of these, of such parking spaces. Such easement shall indicate that the location and/or number of these publicly designated spots may be modified in accordance with the zoning regulations and subject to approval of a special permit modification from the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission. Three B, requirement that the town may require the north, northwesternmost parking spot, which is to be landscaped, to be converted to a parking space, as shown on the approved plans. Three C, merger of the two properties, which indicates that the property may not be divided in any way unless a modification of the special permit condition is approved by the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission, which approval shall be subject to, at a minimum, approval of the Wallingford Water and Sewer Division. Three D, requirement that, subject to compliance of the Wallingford zoning regulations, particularly in regard to parking requirements, the town of Wallingford may require full paved insulation of access slash, slash accesses to adjacent property, properties, as shown on final approved plans and discussed at the meeting, but subject to, to relocation as determined by the town of Wallingford. Such construction shall be in accordance with the requirements of the town of Wallingford and shall be the sole responsibility of the owner of the property at the time that said installation is required by the town. Three E, access easements to the adjacent properties and for future accesses in final locations to be determined by the Planning and Zoning Commission or their designee at the time that construction is required. Three F, easement to the public regarding access to any seating slash public amenity area that is intended to be available or available to or usable by the general public. Condition number four, certificates of occupancy for the residential dwelling units shall be issued as follows. Six garden units and the five on the top floor units shall be issued first and only until, and any additional certificates of occupancy should only be issued following fifty percent completion of the project, including the complete shell of the commercial building on Center Street is completed. Number five, memorandum from the Department of Engineering to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated January tenth, twenty eighteen, regarding PZZ application three four oh one dash one eight, special permit, fifty South Main and three sixty-one Center Street. Number six, comments from Ed Rizzo, Chief Engineer, Wallingford Electric Division, dated December fourteenth, twenty seventeen. Number seven, comments from Mike Goldeski, Fire Marshal, dated, dated and received February fifteenth, twenty seventeen, by the Planning and Zoning Commission of Wallingford. Number eight, inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, to Casey Hand, Wallingford Town Planner, dated December twenty-first, twenty seventeen. Number nine, letter from Casey Hand, the Wallingford Town Plan, Wallingford Town Planner, to John Hall, dated December twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen. Number ten, comments of the Town of Wallingford Building Official, dated March seventh, twenty eighteen. Number eleven, comments of the Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer, Water and Sewer, excuse me, Senior Engineer, dated March second, twenty eighteen, December twenty-first, twenty seventeen, and January thirty-first, twenty eighteen. And number four, thirteen, the applicant shall post a bond in an amount to be determined by the Town of Wallingford Town Planner for S and E control.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. We have a motion on the application. Do we have any discussion or any questions on the application? Oh, excuse me, on the, uh, on the motion? Mr. Simmons, I have just one. If you could please go back on the occupancy, and I'm not sure which...
Okay.
I was a little confused.
Condition number four, certificates of occupancy for the residential dwelling units shall be issued as followed. Six garden units and five units on the top floor shall only be issued, shall be issued first, and then the, and only, and any additional certificates of occupancy shall be only issued after the shell of the commercial building is completed.
Okay, good.
So it's, so it's eleven units CO before, and, and the commercial building before any other COs?
No, good, I, I...
And I designated which ones?
No, I, I thought when you made the motion, I thought I heard something, fifty percent some, somewhere in there as far as...
I might have ad libbed. I, I didn't mean to ad lib. Yeah, sorry.
All right, we have a, uh, we have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Heine.
Uh, no to approve.
Yes.
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 And yes, application has been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to our next item, which is a public hearing. It's a zoning text modification from the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission, section four point two eight, Town Center District. And Mr. Monarazzo, if you would please first read the legal notice, then note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice, uh... dated, um, March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, pertaining to, uh, zoning text amendment for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to, A, create new zoning regulations, four point two six, Town Center District, that will include but not be limited to the following components. Allow for mixed-use development with densities of up to thirty-two units per acre. Allow for decreased slash modified parking requirements, generally consistent with the parking requirements for the CA dash six zone, approved in June two thousand and sixteen, and create new slash modified building form and site layout standards appropriate to a town center. B, add to two point two definitions and associations with creation of the Town Center District. C, make associated changes to other sections of the zoning regulations to remove references to the CA dash six zone and/or where appropriate to reference the Town Center Zone, namely three point one, establishment of districts, four point five point D point three, commercial, um, CA, five point one point B, schedule of lot and building requirements, six point nine, signs, and six point twelve, landscaping, screening, and buffer areas. The proposed regulation is available at, and any questions may be directed to the Planning and Zoning Department Town Hall, forty-five South Main Street, or at two zero three two nine four two zero nine zero. The proposed regulation in its entirety is also filed in the Office of the Town Clerk, forty-five South Main Street, and is posted for viewing on the Town of Wallingford website at www.town.wallingford.c t dot U S. In the legal notices, we have application for zoning regulation change dated, um, two twenty eighteen. We have, um, a proposed zoning text amendment, application nine zero one dash one eight, dated two twenty-six eighteen. Interdepartmental referral, uh, application nine zero one dash one eight, dated two fourteen eighteen. Interoffice memorandum to Casey Hand, Wallingford Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated March first, two thousand and eighteen. Correspondence from John Walworth to Casey Hand, actually Costello on this, dated March eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, correspondence from Stephen Marcarelli, Mercarelli, to, uh, Casey Costello, Town Planner, dated March eighth, two thousand and eighteen. A letter dated March eighth, two thousand and eighteen, um, to Casey Costello, Town Planner, um, from Stephen Mercarelli. And a memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Jenna Small, Corporation Counsel, dated March eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Monarazzo. Before I turn this over to our, uh, town planner to, uh, give a, uh, overview and a presentation on this, this is, these regulations, I'll just make a few comments, it's something that the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission is, uh, you know, been working on for, uh, for quite some time. We've had, and Mrs. Hand, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we've had three, uh, at least three workshops on this, three or four workshops on this. Uh, so there has been a, you know, fair amount of, uh, of work put into this by the Planning and Zoning Commission and also from members of the, uh, of the public who attended those, uh, those workshops. One of the items that was, uh, given to us, uh, in our pack, it was some comments on the, on the regulations from our corporate counsel, and her comments are, are quite extensive. I think during this meeting, we'll certainly be discussing some of those, but, uh, given the extent of her comments, and I suspect we'll have, uh, comments, uh, from the public, I don't anticipate that we're going to take any action on these regulations this evening, because I think there are quite a few issues that have been raised that I don't think that in one meeting could be, could be resolved. So I just want to make that clear for all the members of the public that are here this evening. Uh, with that though, I, I would like to turn the, the meeting over to our town planner so that she can give a, uh, overview as to what we're looking to do with these regulations, and then get into more specifics about the regulations and what we hope that they'll accomplish. So with that, I'll turn the meeting over to our town planner.
Okay, um, before I sort of go into the regulation, I do want to make one clarification to you, just because we got this question from a lot of members of the public. Um, if we, both letters and legal notices were sent to property owners that are actually in the proposed zone, um, so, which gets more into the next application, but just to clarify, so if someone, if you receive the copy of just the legal notice, you are within five hundred feet of the proposed zone, which is why you receive a notice. If you didn't also, if you also received the letter, and only if you also received the letter, you're also in the proposed zone itself. So just to clarify, because we had some people call that were thinking they were in the zone, and really they were just within the five hundred foot area. So just to clarify. Um, okay, this, this regulation, as, uh, Chairman Sechter indicated, is something that the commission has been working on for a little while, and it's something that came out of, um, our Plan of Conservation and Development, and I think it'd been talked about in town for a little while, uh, but the Plan of Conservation and Development, um, we asked the consultant at the time to look at, um, there to do a section specific to our town center area, and one of the recommendations that came out of that was to create a, um, town center, an actual regulation that's specific to the town center. Um, and some of the principles that we look to, um, encourage and allow, um, here, and, and some of these things, a lot of these things were already somewhat built into the CA six zone. I think we're just looking to take it that next step to really make it appropriate for a town center. Um, so for example, our, the CA six zone, which is sort of the, um, the pseudo-town center zone now, CA zones do exist in other parts of town, the CA six zone does not. So, um, the difference being that the CA six does have, for example, zero setbacks right now. So, so some of these things are not changing, um, the way the regulation is proposed, though it is proposed as an entire brand-new section of the regulation, where the CA six would be, um, basically become obsolete, obsolete, and we would have a town center regulation. Um, this, essentially what the regulation looks to do is to further promote mixed-use development, uh, in the town center area, uh, that, um, involves, it's, it's intended to essentially sort of stimulate, look to stimulate, um, some appropriate and in-character development, um, within the area and redevelopment, um, and by creating mixed use and by including, um, building form standards, um, so there are, it's, there's sort of a common, um, or it, it, sort of a move in the planning field right now in some instances towards form-based zoning. You may have heard of that, um, in some situations. So this is sort of a hybrid of both use, sort of standard, typical Euclid, what's called Euclidian zoning, that's use-based, and also form-based zoning. So, um, what it looks to do is sort of create options for the area and for potential users and potential developers and potential businesses in the area, but also to ensure that we're getting the type of development that is built in a way that's appropriate to a town center and is consistent with what we want in a town center. And what that means is buildings close to the road, um, buildings that are close to one another, so you create sort of that street wall, the pedestrian-friendly street wall. Um, we're also looking to permit, um, supportive residential use. So the residential use, um, creates another component, another little, level of vibrancy in a town center area. Although I will note that in the town center, um, the, the primary focus is on the commercial use. So we do, we are looking to have a, a significant amount of supportive residential, but again, this is really to support that vibrancy in the town center area. Um, so significant sort of, I'll, I'll sort of touch on some main points. Um, the proposed zone, um, would, right now, um, as was evidenced in the last application, uh, residential use on the upper stories is permitted, uh, requires a spec, but requires a special permit. Um, as proposed, residential use would be permitted by right within the zone. Now currently, there is no restriction under that special permit provision, there's no restriction on density. It doesn't specify what the maximum density could be, that's really on a case-by-case basis. Because we are, or in part because the proposal would now make that residential use on the upper stories by right, there is a proposed limit to, um, the density, which would be maximum number of dwelling units per acre. Um, as proposed, the maximum density, the minimum lot size here would be, uh, twenty-five thousand square feet, that's a little over half an acre. That's also consistent with your, um, downtown apartment zone that you have now, that's the minimum, uh, acre, or lot size there. Um, and that doesn't mean, obviously, there are a lot of lots in the town center area that are not twenty-five thousand square feet. Those are still grandfathered in, things can still be done on those lots. Um, but because we're looking to encourage and we're envisioning more cohesive, larger-scale developments, or somewhat larger-scale developments, you're permitted a higher, uh, maximum density if you do meet that twenty-five thousand square feet. So that's meant to encourage, um, property owners to work together, to combine lots, um, and again, to encourage developers to look at more cohesive, um, slightly larger-scale developments. So you'd still be permitted to do something on an undersized lot you're grandfathered in for size, um, provided you comply with the other zoning regulations. If, if it's an undersized lot, the maximum is twenty-six units per acre. If it's a compliant lot at the twenty-five thousand square feet, as proposed, uh, you would go up to thirty-two units potentially for eight, per acre. Um, a lot of the uses that are in here are, um, uses that are currently, uh, proposed in this, or currently permitted in the CA six zone. There are some expansions, there are some exceptions, um, notably, uh, pawn shops have been removed and, um, certain, uh, sale of certain items that are related to tobacco and vaping paraphernalia have been removed, um, adult uses have been removed, um, and then we did add some accessory uses that have come up in the last several years with people that are trying to, um, maybe want to have special events in the town center associated with their business or things of that nature. So we added some accessory uses in there that would allow those to a certain extent, but still with, with some controls associated with them. Um, so that relates to town-sponsored events, um... So that relates to town-sponsored events, farmers' markets, allowing a mobile food vendor two times a year, on private property, things of that nature. The other thing of note, which I will, I'll come back to the building form standards, is the parking requirements. In 2016, the Commission, no, in 2017, I'm sorry, the Commission adopted modifications to the parking requirements in the CA6 Zone. So those have essentially been co-opted from what was the CA6 Zone, and incorporated into the new proposed town center zone with some changes. The idea behind these regulations is to acknowledge that our parking needs in the town center are obviously very different from parking needs, say, on Route 5. So you don't need the level of parking for every building, you know, you don't need the parking that Walmart has on Route 5 in a town center. And the reason for that is that you have, there's a variety of reasons. You have shared uses, so people can park once and go to multiple, and go to different operation, or different businesses. You have mixed uses, so you have a lot of different peak, or some changing, some fluctuations in the peak demand of different uses. You have public parking, there's on-street parking, and there is town-owned parking, there's town-leased parking. So what we don't want is huge seas of pavement, because where you have pavement, you don't have, you don't have building. So this, these, and the Commission spent a lot of time discussing these and working on these, and this is what came out of these. So essentially, what happens is that the standard parking requirements throughout town are reduced, and then there are several provisions that allow for someone to potentially reduce or to address their parking requirement in another way. So if the parking doesn't physically fit on your lot, you have some other options. And those include, you could, there's a fees in lieu of parking provision, there's a provision for, if you make some of your parking available as public parking, it counts at a greater num, a greater amount. There is a shared parking provision based on different peak, the different peaks of different uses. And all of those are by special permit. So the Commission does review every single one of those. If someone is not compliant with the basic reduced parking requirement, then they have the option to come in for a special permit to utilize some of these other options. So one of the issues that I think was raised in the Town Attorney's Memo, which is valid, is, well, what if someone proposes they're going to make one space available to the general public? That's silly, right? That doesn't really accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. And so in that case, I think that's something where the Commission would say no, that, or would likely say no, because that's not in keeping with what we're trying to do. We're trying to create sort of cooperative parking. Another thing that was written into this is that, in applying for those special permits, applicants have to demonstrate that they have looked at cooperating and, in terms of circulation with the neighboring properties. So if there are ways to make the flow and the circulation work better with those adjacent Back to building form standards, some of this came from our incentive housing zone, and some of it is not. The incentive, the incentive housing zone is permitted to, or permits the town by state law to have design standards, architectural full-blown design standards. That's not normally allowed under zoning, so in this case, we do not have full-blown architectural design standards. We can't dictate building materials, we can't dictate, things of that nature. But what we can regulate under zoning is building form. So where is the building on the lot? How is the site designed? As I said, currently, there is already, there are already zero setbacks in the CA6 Zone. This looks to build off of some of those requirements, amongst other things, the requirements are really that the building has to extend a certain percentage of the width of the lot, or a certain portion of the width of the lot. So you don't end up, so you do end up with a good, solid street wall, as opposed to a lot of gaps, you know, sort of significant gaps. There is a provision that encourages interconnection between lots to further promote that. There are also requirements for windows, there is a requirement, there are requirements regarding the layout of the building on the site, so there have to be, for example, changes to the building, jogs in the building, things of that nature, in order to prevent, well, we want a street wall, we don't want one big, blank, boring, looming street wall. So the practice is to require changes in the building form, and certain requirements with the roofs. This regulation also proposes to allow the maximum building height to go up to 45 feet, or four stories, whichever is more restrictive. So you could have four stories that go up to 45 feet. There are also requirements for, some changes to the requirements for the layout of the parking requirements, and there are also requirements specific to parking garages that are similar to what's required in our incentive housing zone. Essentially, what's required is that if you, if someone did want to construct a parking garage, the parking garage has to be behind a commercial component, so it has to be essentially hidden on the lot. The one exception is for a corner lot, that was discussed, on the secondary road, it does not have to be, but there does still have to be, they still have to comply with some of the design components and some landscaping. So I think that sort of is the proposed regulation in a nutshell. Like I said, the parking, a lot of it was already adopted, and is really incorporated I will wait, I think we're waiting to talk about the actual proposed location of the zone until we get to the next application. So I think at this point, it would probably be appropriate to open it up to questions. Oh, and I will say, just for the Commission's sake, I did review the comments from the Town Attorney, and I started incorporating them into, or making notes sort of for suggestions for those, so we can go through those tonight, or not. I think some of them, I mean, some of them I think are very straightforward, some of them were in regard to existing uses as we currently have them written, so I did have that discussion with her, and some of them were things that certainly warranted, I think, some, some, maybe some change, some relatively minor changes, but changed nonetheless.
Good. Thank you. And if we could turn the blinders.
Turn the lights back on.
And Casey, if you could turn the spotlight off too, please. Easy enough. Thank you. Commission members with comments, questions concerning these regulations for our Town Planner?
Mr. Simmons. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, and I know we, it's already nine, I think, I'd like to be on record as saying I certainly support the town center regulations. I've discussed at numerous workshops my concerns about the parking, and I am still not in favor of what we're proposing, but the greater regulation is fine. In addition to, you know, the fact that we have a very active and engaged ZBA that waives parking requirements for nearly all the resident, all the restaurant uses downtown, it's difficult for us to see, difficult for me to see how someone would use a fee in lieu of parking, et cetera. But I certainly support the bulk of the regulation, and I appreciate the comments that you shared with us, Casey, through the Town Attorney, because I think her comments are very valid. But I would, I'm anxious for us to move forward on this, because I do think this is a long time coming. So I'm generally in favor of this as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Any other Commission members like to make any comments at this time? Ms. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Casey, do you plan on, one of the comments that the Town Attorney had was with respect to the indoor recreational facilities, is that something that you're, you plan on addressing?
Well, ultimately, it's up to you all. I, it's, Janice and Attorney Small and I talked about that, and I said, you know, my comment was, well, you do see people get creative sometimes with, you see those bowling alleys sort of tucked into places, or things like that. I certainly don't think we're going to get any skating rinks anywhere. There are other types of indoor recreation that we do have, so there are yoga places, and there are dance studios, and there are things of that nature. But yeah, I mean, I think taking out some of the less likely references probably makes sense, unless you guys think otherwise.
No, the only reason I ask is because, as I was looking through it, that was one of the things that struck me, and I was saying, I just, I can't picture that, and quite frankly, I don't know that that's exactly what we would even want to have, you know, come into our downtown. I'm not sure, at least myself, speaking for myself, that's not something that I think I would be in favor of coming into our downtown. But the yoga studios and stuff like that, obviously, that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
Just so I'm clear, specifically, are you thinking, taking out like the skating rinks, bowling alleys?
Yeah, I mean, certainly the skating rinks.
Yeah.
I think that that's a, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Bowling alleys, yeah, I think that that's probably something else, at least in my concept of our downtown area, and what we're trying to attract, the businesses we're trying to attract, that probably be, I don't think that that would be something that I'd be in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commission members? I guess I just, before we go out to the public, just like to, I think I'd go some of Mr. Fitzsimmons' comments, certainly, we spent, I think, quite a bit of time on this, discussing this. I think he and I probably has a little, have a little bit of a difference when it comes to parking. I know Mr. Fitzsimmons would like to see closer to a zero parking. From my perspective, I think what we're offering right now is, is a compromise, and I think, you know, said in the past, we do have parking lots in town, but one of our major parking lots right now is on the Wooding property, and, you know, that's a, that's a temporary lot, and who knows what's going to happen with that. And I'm looking at the other parking lots that we have in town, whether they be public lots or private lots, a good number of them are in somewhat disrepair. And, you know, for me to go down to a zero parking until there's a significant improvement in, in the parking lots that we have, that just doesn't seem to be a viable option to me, but I certainly appreciate Mr. Fitzsimmons' comments. As far as if we're talking about bowling and skating, you know, I would, I'd certainly prefer to see those eliminated. I certainly don't think skating works, and I'm not quite sure, you know, a bowling alley downtown really works either. But with that said, this is a public hearing, so would ask members from the public that would like to comment on the, on the regulations, to please come forward with their name and address, and we'll start with the gentleman in the back.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Craig Fishby, I live on Grebe Road. Just wanted to address the things that you were discussing. I share the concerns about parking, and, you know, I'll just point out to you, if a Commission, if you as a Commission are disappointed with what the ZBA does, you perhaps could do what Meriden has done in the past, where they've brought a lawsuit against their ZBA. Because I too have shared the frustration of you developing regulations and carte blanche is going on elsewhere. With regard to the bowling alley, skating rink, I have to disagree, quite frankly. You know, I know when I go to Fenway Park, right across the street, there's a bar with a bowling alley downstairs. And, you know, we talked about the IHZ, some people complained, you know, you're bringing young families, you want young urban professionals to live in our downtown by the train, what happens if they have a child? You know, there's no place for them to play, you know? So those kinds of activities perhaps would enhance a downtown. You don't want just stores, and, you know, and restaurants, and stuff like that, but you want people, you want a walkable downtown that people can do a lot of things. I remember the movie theater we used to have on Center Street, I used to be there all the time, every Saturday. You know, it's not akin to a bowling alley or an ice skating rink, but I think it enhanced the downtown. So, you know, I look forward to seeing what comes of this, and I had a question. I would assume this is not the last night on this, and I know there's questions that Janice, Corporate Corporation Counsel had asked, am I to expect that there's going to be a subsequent public hearing?
Yeah, as I indicated, Mr. Fishby, or Attorney Fishby, at the beginning, that I don't anticipate, anticipate us taking any action on this application this evening, that we'll have another, a continuation of the public hearing, you know, given the fact that some of the questions that have been, or issues that have been raised by Attorney, or our Corporate Counsel, and also may very well be with some questions, opinions, ideas raised by some of the public. So again, I don't see us taking any action on that, on this application this evening, it'll be continued to our, our next month.
Where you will invite public comment as well.
Oh, yeah, we're, there's no intention of closing the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be a continuation of the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Other members of the public? Yes?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Is the map that you're given, is this set in stone?
The map is, the, yeah, the map is a separate part of the regulations, so right now, we're just, we're looking at the regulations right now.
Okay.
We're taking up the map, that's going to be the next item that we're going to be taking up, that we'll discuss.
All right, the 45 feet, so if you put me in a CA6 Zone, I have two properties that we're gonna, you're gonna throw into there, one of them's undeveloped, it's small, but if I decide to build something on it, I can build something 40 feet, 45 feet high, do I need a size of a lot? I can build-
If you end up, if, if your property does, which'll get talked about in the next application, but-
Well, this is a different property.
Right, if you're, if, if a property is in the CA6 Zone, yes, any, any building can be built up to 45.
This is in the lower part, so we can, it's between houses, so we could literally build a 45-foot structure, that high around these houses.
Well, it's meant to be a commercial, primarily-
Well, we can have commercial on the first floor, and you're saying residential on the next three floors.
Yep.
Okay, that's, and why are you going to 45 feet from what you are now? What's the, what's the point of going so high in downtown Wallingford?
Well, right now, that would allow for a four-story building.
I understand that, but why? Why, why is the need to build it, make it more urban-looking versus, because once you start building the tall, tall buildings, you give it more of an urban look to it. What's the point of making Wallingford downtown more urban-looking?
I think part of it is to, to try to encourage some development, I think what we've, I guess you can perhaps build on it, this is Mrs. Hand, but I think what we've seen in the past, you know, as far as with the properties right now, one of the challenges with a lot of the properties that we have are smaller parcels. I think, you know, especially when we're looking in the incentive housing zone, there hasn't really been very much activity in that zone right now. And I suspect that's because you have smaller properties, and for a single property owner to, you know, to, to really develop the property, makes it much more difficult. Under this, you know, I think to some degree, we're envisioning, you know, hopefully that people will, you know, acquire one or two properties, and to do some redevelopment on that.
I understand, but then build 45-foot tall buildings?
Yeah, no, I understand.
Versus 30, versus three stories, they could still accumulate properties and build three-story buildings versus now four.
No, I understand. To some degree, though, it comes down to what the economics of it is also.
I understand that.
You know, I mean, that, if someone, you know, is asking, if, if you're looking to- You know, I mean, that if someone, you know, is asking, if, if you're looking to assemble properties and someone may be asking, I won't say an unreasonable price, but a high price for the property in order to acquire it and then to construct something that's economically viable, a two-story, a three-story building may not be something that's feasible.
I would also add, we looked at some of the existing buildings in the town center area, and there are some that are four stories. And so I think the commission.
What's, besides Kaplan's building, which is four stories?
That's the one, that's primarily the one I'm talking.
Okay, you said buildings.
Yeah, so you're right. Okay, the Kaplan.
And that was built 150 years ago.
Yeah, but I think the feeling was that that's still consist, that's not inconsistent with what we're trying to do. Now, I will also say that part of the way the, the building form standards are written are intended so that the top story roof line, the, the top, the line of the top story, the design of the top story is meant to be sort of minimized in terms of its presence.
Still 40 feet?
Yeah, yeah.
Still 45 feet high. And still gonna block the sun. It's still gonna block. It's gonna make it more of an urban look.
It will make it a more dense look, yeah.
Yeah, more dense look, more urban look. But these are still for discussion or not for discussion? On the, also, all the things that you were discussing tonight, you'll be coming back and having additional discussions? And then the map you're gonna be talking about still tonight?
Absolutely. The map we'll be talking about this evening in the, the next part of this. Again, this is a public hearing. As I mentioned, we're going to continue this to our, to next month. So, you know, the purpose of the public hearing is to get input from the public. So that's, we're not saying that, you know, this is, these are the regulations and this public hearing is just for the benefit of the public and we're not, we're not seriously taking into the comments that are being made by the public.
I do want to echo what Attorney Fishmine just said about with Meriden, with ZBA. I mean, allowing subterranean seller apartments is just something. And why the town didn't stop that? Because once you set the precedent, now why can't other people who want below-ground apartments say, hey, you allowed it here? So really, I would hope that the town would, if it's your board, I don't know whose board it is, would take ZBA to task on some of these approvals because it's outrageous you're allowing it. Thank you.
I will say that we've, you know, we've given some consideration to that. And certainly on some of the applications that have gone to the ZBA, you know, we have issued a, a comment letter to the ZBA with, with our concerns. Unfortunately, I think with most of them, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been to no avail. Yes?
I'm wondering what your ultimate vision for the downtown is. Is it strictly to be totally, I mean, is your total thing, does this work economically? Or do you have a larger vision for what our downtown should be and what our sense of community in this downtown should be? I mean, Mr. Gross just asked you if he could build a building that's between two houses, let's say, 45 feet tall. And the answer was yes. I mean, are we just trying to stuff in as much as we can because we think that we're going to rent to people who come into the downtown and say, oh, my God, this place is ugly. I don't want to live here. I mean, look at what happens when you drive into the downtown. We're hoping so much that we could do something with, with the way it looks as, as opposed to how many people are in there. You talked about vision before at some point tonight. We have a vision. But what is the ultimate vision? We have a lovely, I'm not saying it shouldn't be economically viable, but do you have to go to these extremes to make it economically viable? I think a 45 feet is much too much. We have the Kaplan building and that's there. And it looks fine as far as I'm concerned. But I think you better think more about what the ultimate goal is here. I've lived in this town all my life. I don't want to see 45-foot buildings in the downtown. I don't care how many people you think you're going to cram into them. And I think I have a right as a citizen to say that, that I don't want my downtown to look like that. I don't want it to be a hodgepodge of buildings that are 30 feet high, another one stuck in between two, two 25 or 30-foot buildings that's 45 feet high, that doesn't have the, the width to balance that height. I don't want it to look like a bunch of little skyscrapers here and there. I think you better really consider this.
Thank you. Other members from the public?
Mike Glidden, 90, Northford Road. I just want to piggyback on some comments that Lucille just made. Kind of what I'm hearing is, in a lot of, what my comments are, is that your approach to the Euclidean zoning, really, this is not visioning what the community wants or what, what is good for the community. You really should be looking at a form-based code. And in developing a form-based code, the emphasis will be placed on the public realm. So you're looking at the streetscape. You're looking at how buildings interact with each other. You're looking at where the public is. The facade treatments. We're no longer having the conversations of uses. The other thing I wanted to point out, the city of Hartford just, they have a form-based code. And they just eliminated parking standards within their regulations. In speaking with the planner of the city of Hartford, there has been no cry. There has been no stymie of development. People are interested. What I've saw in the, in the parking proposal as submitted, I would say, why not just scrap parking regulations, period? Let the market dictate the intensity of the use and what uses so should cohabit with each other. And then I would say, now we're having the conversation where I get back to where I said about form-based code, where we're looking at the importance of what something looks like, how it presents itself from the street, the public realm. There is a regulating plan. I mean, this approach right now, I mean, Lucille did bring up a great point. There is no regulating plan. So what Mr. Gross said earlier about, so you have two properties wedged next to each other, and now you have the 45-foot tall spite building that goes in. And I don't mean by spite building in a sense, it's all hodgepodge together. My other comments were, I know that you're discussing that you've received correspondence from the Corporation Counsel on this matter. I'd like to know whether the Corporation Counsel reviewed the waiver provisions for the parking regulations specifically. Because I'm not an attorney. However, in Connecticut, there's been a, there's a recent court case that says that planning and zoning commissions cannot issue waivers. It is only a power granted statutorily to the zoning board of appeals. And just want to point that out, that it is a technical issue that really should specifically be reviewed by the, the Corporation Counsel. I have been, at least what I've heard in trainings is that a way to get around that is master planning. Once again, we're getting into a form-based code or a larger approach, not what we're doing tonight. The other question regarding the, the town's attorney's review is whether the provision, or it's just more of a clarification. On section 69B16, having to do with signs, is that a new section in the regulations you're creating or is that you're deleting an existing one?
Excuse me?
Is that a new section?
No, it's not the signs. That's not a new section.
So you're getting rid of that? The avenue banners, revitalization?
No, as far as, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey. I think this was, when she talked about the sign provisions, excuse me, we had, she has, over time, indicated that we needed to look at our regulations concerning signs in general throughout the town.
Yeah, that's a, that's an existing provision in the rag. That's, well, no, it's, well, it's staying, but, let me say, hold on, it's staying, but we, as a result of the Supreme Court case, we need to revisit our entire sign rag section so that.
My comment on that would be is remove it. The US Supreme Court said that zoning regulations cannot create classes based on uses in your sign regulations. So you have another flaw in this proposal. And I hope that the town's attorneys looked at that or at least that consideration would be to removing it. The last comment I just have is, you know, Wallingford is a community, we have a center that everyone else envies and wishes that they can have. Either they try artificially, such as a Blueback Square, to replicate kind of what was occurred over the years. But we're also a community that lacks creativity. And we lack the vision of looking forward. And unfortunately, right now, we're seeing our neighbors, North Haven, Southington, Berlin, Hamden, and even Meriden are experiencing growth in their grand, their grand lists that we are not seeing. We can't afford to strive for second place. So when we get back and you hear the comments about the bigger picture, what the community looks like, what we, what we envision, these are communities looking forward. I feel that it's the time warp continually with this community. And I'm not, and, and I'm saying this, my frustration built up. I know that you had a lot of comments tonight about the zoning board of appeals. As the former chairman of the zoning board of appeals and as a professor, working in the field of land use, I, during my tenure, we, I stressed the fact of, of asking for hardships. If that is no longer occurring in the board, I can't speak to that. That's, that's someone else's problem. That I would, I would encourage you that keep an eye on their logs and appeal a decision for once.
Thank you. Casey, did you want to comment at all? It looked like you wanted to comment concerning the review that our corporate counsel made.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, well, yes, to answer the question, yes, Attorney Small did review the entire section as you saw in her response. And I will say that the provisions that you have in your regulations aren't actually waiver provisions and they have very specific conditions. So my understanding was that that was deemed acceptable.
So she, you feel confident that she reviewed that? Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Other members from the public that like to speak?
Good evening, Joe Muir from Economic Development. First of all, I'd like to commend you on taking action or trying to take action and improving our downtown area. You know, for years, I've sat on panels and I've sat on boards and I've sat on committees, hearing nothing, but we got to do something with downtown. We have to do something with downtown. Why ain't we doing something with downtown? And the downtown needs to be improved. You gentlemen and ladies took action. I was at all your meetings. They were open to the public. The public had a right to, to put input as they do tonight. And I think you've come up with a real plan that addresses future growth. What most people are not taking into consideration is the way the trend of society is going. More people want to live downtown. These are smaller units. And it's going to be the town that can supply them, that can bring these people in. And the mixture of these buildings are going to give us commercial, are going to give us residential. It's going to give us a community. And Wallingford's going to have the best of both worlds. We're going to have the past married to the future. And we're going to have economic growth. And that's what we're looking at. And I commend you for doing this. Unfortunately, I won't be at your next meeting and I wish you luck on the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Yes?
Debbie Gross, Long Hill Road. I want to commend Mr. Glidden for his effort in talking about form-based code. I'm not familiar with it, but I agree wholeheartedly. He seems to be a professional. Obviously, he knows what he's doing. It's looking at things, past and future, based on the look and what fits and not just making hasty decisions. So I do wish you would take what he said to heart. We do want our downtown to be the best it can be. So please take his comments to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members? Seeing none, I guess, yes?
I know I'm not a resident of the town. Is that okay?
Name and address.
Milton Gregory Gru. My office is located at 241 Main Street in Woodbury. And I was the architect for the previous proposal tonight. And of course, I've been reading this with interest because we will be developing with, within this zone. I'm also a licensed building official. And I, there were just a couple of points. They're, they're technical issues, but I thought maybe I should just bring them up while I'm here. In item 16, under 4.26, 4.26B16, the requirement that residential uses are permitted except that only handicapped accessible units can be located on the ground floor. We have state statutes that say that municipalities cannot have regulations within the town that supersede the state building code. So the state building code actually has an entire chapter 11 that scopes out for different types of uses, including different residential uses. What are the accessibility requirements? How many of those units need to be accessible? Where they need to be located? And to what level of accessibility that they are to be designed? In most cases, ground floor units would wind up being accessible. But they actually have in the, in the state building code and its reference standards, three levels of accessibility. So I don't quite know what the point would be to even have this and not just let it be the building code. Let the building official be able to determine what needs to be accessible or not. You also have the Federal Fair Housing Act that sets the standard on where accessibility is required. And in buildings that have less than four units, it doesn't require it. So you might have a small development. People were talking about having small lots, where theoretically, they might have three units in a building, but you're not even requiring, you don't even want residential use exclusively on a ground floor anyway. So it probably in a practical way wouldn't happen. So I'm not quite sure why, to even bother stating where accessibility has to occur. The other item you may want to consider, it's just because I've, in my practice, I've had a significant experience with this. There's a federal law called the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. It sets a very high bar for municipalities on restrictions of where places of worship can be. And I noticed that you have listed in item 15, funeral homes as a permitted use. But then in C2, religious institutions require a special permit. And it might be hard for a judge to parse out what the practical difference would be between a funeral home and a church. And if you buy special permit as, I mean, as of right, a funeral home can go wherever it wants in this zone. Why wouldn't a church be able to? So you may want to consider either permitting churches as of right or taking funeral homes and putting them down as a special permit use to avoid that kind of legal jeopardy. And the last item I had was in paragraph, I don't know even where it starts, but it's the reference to energy efficiency. It's a sub-paragraph K. I'm sorry, I don't know what the main heading is here. Oh, it's on the design requirements. And so in, under energy efficiency, it says sustainable construction techniques and materials to the extent practical shall be incorporated into new construction. And then it says, energy efficiency shall be a central goal in selection of lighting, windows, materials, insulation and whatnot. They have to, any new construction has to be highly energy efficient anyway. The state of Connecticut has adopted the International Energy Conservation Code. And starting July 1st, we're going to have the 2018 edition of that. This is probably a redundant paragraph because they have to meet a high bar, including submitting to the building official how many watts of lighting that they're using and to stay under a certain requirement as far as the amount of lighting that's being used inside and outside the building. So you probably can't get to a point where you'd be more efficient than that. If sustainability is really the goal here, not just energy efficiency, because that's going to be a given for any new construction going forward. If sustainability is really the, the goal here, you might consider specifically giving an incentive to a developer that if he, for instance, actually achieves, say, lead, a lead silver or two green globes, a level of sustainability, green construction, maybe he gets to, you know, have more, more area to his building or some, some more height even. But something that gives an incentive for actually. But something that gives an incentive for actually putting more money into the construction to make it more sustainable and more green because it typically does cost more than just conventional construction where you don't think about those things. But as far as the energy efficiency being a central goal, that is now a central goal in every construction project there is. So it's really not something, you're not doing anything with this paragraph that's really changing what the architect or the planner for that project is going to be thinking anyway. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. I guess, Mrs. Tene, would you like to perhaps comment on the comments that this gentleman made on some of the issues?
Sure. Yeah, the handicap accessibility component, it's not a requirement that you have handicap accessible units on the first floor. It's just that handicap accessible units would be potentially allowed on the first floor where no other residential units would be. So it's not an attempt to override or to dictate what the state building code requires. It's that we have, in order to have handicap accessible units on upper stories, you have to have an elevator. So this is an opportunity. If you do have a smaller development and someone wanted to do a handicap accessible unit on a first floor, on the courtyard side of a building, it would allow them the option. Certainly, they would certainly still have to comply with the requirements. And it doesn't require that they do that, it just says that they can. And then in regard to, you know, in regard to the energy efficiency component, that seems to sort of keep springing up. It's really an attempt to give a nod to or really remind applicants that we are looking for those sustainable components and those energy efficient components. That's essentially what the statute allows us to do, is to encourage those. I mean, we could take it out if it's problematic to people. I just think it's worth sort of, at least having that reminder that we are looking for those components in the site design. And then leaving it up to a particular applicant to demonstrate to us how exactly they're proposing to accomplish that.
Thank you.
And also, I just wanted to comment, you know, there is a, this is, as I said at the beginning of my presentation, this is, these are intended to be hybrid regulations, a hybrid between Euclidean zoning and form-based zoning. So there is a pretty well-established form-based component in here. Certainly, if there are things that we should add to or people have suggestions in terms of what we should modify or expand upon, you know, I think that that would certainly be helpful. But we do have that component, that is an important component of this regulation for all the reasons that were discussed.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Just a quick question to the chair, to the town planner. Then on handicap accessible, what does that mean? Because I have a definition of it and I just don't know if we're on the same page here. Why would it be in there anyway? Because what makes an apartment handicap accessible?
It would have to be handicap accessible and compliance with ADA compliance.
Which for rental just means that we have to have the ability for them to get to the apartment. Inside, they can change it to make it accessible for themselves. And this gentleman over here, I'm sure, would correct either one of us and knows the regulation. I think alls we have to do is put a ramp if it's the first floor. And as long as they can get in through the door on a ramp, then we're done.
I would have it reviewed by our building official, but, right, it's the accessibility component, it's the entry component. I don't, well, I would have to defer to our building official on that. I don't know what the requirements are in terms of like the doorways. I know there are recommendations.
Just to get in to the apartment. They have to do anything else inside the apartment, that's their responsibility. If they want it accessible. We have to get them into the, if we're the landlord, we have to get them in. But from there, that's up to them. They have to put the bars up, they have to put whatever they want to do. Right? I mean, so what?
I would need to double, you mean, under this requirement?
Yeah, so that's.
No, under this requirement, it would have to comply with ADA requirements.
What would, the whole apartment or just get them in?
The whole apartment.
See, I don't think we'd have to do that. I think under the ADA, I just have to get them into the apartment.
Right, so if ADA doesn't require you to do it, then you don't have to do it.
This gentleman's going to correct both of us right now. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Enlighten us.
Okay, so Americans with Disabilities Act doesn't really address residential, leaves it to the Federal Fair Housing Act and to the building code. Well, I guess for starters, there's no such term anymore as handicapped accessible. See, that's not PC, so that should probably be removed to be accessible for disabled persons. There are, in the building code, three different types of accessible units. One's called an accessible unit, one's called a type A unit, and another one's called a type B. And I can do an entire, well, I just designed in Darien, a three-story, 20-unit project where they were all type B. So there's actually not one unit in the building that's actually called accessible. These are legal terms. So that's why you may want to tread carefully with just saying certain units have to be handicapped accessible because that may be going well beyond and above federal requirements and the building code on what an accessible unit is. Accessible units you find in hotels. If you're a disabled person and you request the accessible unit, and that's to a whole higher level, where there are certain types of units which are more adaptable. You have the wider doors, which you don't have grab bars and all the hardware yet unless you require it personally. So those are like type A and type B units. And even those have distinctions on what the clearances are that are required inside and through the units. So I just think you're kind of opening a little bit of an indoors box with these ground floor units, calling them handicapped accessible.
Can I ask you, do you have a suggestion for language that would be better?
Well, if the only, if your only thought is that they be, see, because even the building code is not going to require, if, let's say it's three units, let's say it's a project, a small building, where they want to put three units on the ground floor. The building code, state building code and federal fair housing act will say they don't have to be to any level of accessibility.
And then they wouldn't be able to have any on the first, then they wouldn't have to have any on the first floor?
So maybe you just want to leave it alone because, and say, you have to have four units. If you want to be on the ground floor, you have to have at least four units and just leave it there because then the federal regulations will take over and they will have to be accessible.
So if the intention is that when you have to have units, they may be on the first floor, that's what the intention of the regulation is?
But you may want to say that if it's less than four, you can't do that. Because a developer is going to go to the state building inspector and say, they're making me do something, they're making me do something that's not required by the building code and the building official can't enforce it.
Right, but we're not requiring that they be on the first floor. We're allowing that they be on the first floor.
But they have to be handic, you're saying they have to be handicapped accessible if they're on the first floor?
Right.
What is that? I'm telling you, there is no such animal as handicapped accessible.
So when the state building code says if you have over four units, you have to have one accessible unit, how would they?
It says if they're on the ground floor, they all have to be type B units, which is a level of accessibility. But they're not called accessible units, they're called type B units. If you really want to know what it means, that complies with a standard called the ICC 8117.1 standard, which is where it parses out what an accessible unit is, a type A and a type B.
Okay, so our alternative would be then to say that you can't have ground level units at all and that everyone has to do an elevator?
Or if they're going to do ground floor units, they have to be at least four. And then you're assured that they're going to meet your goal of accessibility. Because as soon as a developer proposes four, then the building official is going to see that and say, you got to have four type B units. And you won't have to sweat it. They will be accessible to the extent required by the building code.
What we don't want is to allow non-accessible units on the first floor.
Then don't allow less than four. Because then you're imposing something that's over and above the state building code and municipalities can't do that. And it's over the Federal Fair Housing Act. It's like, what would be even the point of imposing something greater? Federal Fair Housing Act is serious civil rights law.
Right, but we're not requiring any number of units.
Then don't. Then, but.
But normally.
That little jeopardy is the three units, those first three units. If it turns out it's a small project.
Right.
You know, a developer is going to say, you can't.
And then they wouldn't have to do any?
Right.
Right. Right. This wouldn't require them to do it?
So don't allow it unless there's four units.
Okay, so, okay, so if we said four developments that have four or more residential units?
On the ground floor, yeah.
Well, no, they wouldn't be allowed. It's not allowing all units on the ground floor. The idea is to not require everybody to build an elevator, that's the idea.
Okay. Then you may just not want to allow it then.
At all.
I think this is something I.
Sorry, no, I'm.
No, 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 I think this is, I think this is a good discussion. Candidly, I think at the, this evening, that's not going to be, that's not going to be decided because I, candidly, I'm following it and I'm not following it. And I think that that's something that is for a, you know, a further discussion and a further review. Anyone else from the public? Yes?
Hi, hello. Dan McDonald, 59 Academy Street. I just wanted to know, my question might be contingent on how cut in stone you are with the map itself. Because I had a question about individual property, but.
Again, the map, that's something that we're going to be discussing. Right now, we're just discussing the regulations. Then we'll go on to the map. But again, much like the regulations, the map, nothing is, the purpose of the public hearing is to get comments from the public. So nothing is, if you would, set in stone. So everything is, everything is up for discussion. But again, we'll have that, you know, that discussion.
I'll save my speech for later. Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Last question, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. So based on what you've heard tonight, are you going to take one step back and do maybe another workshop to try and take over what this gentleman over here said, Mr. Glidden had said? There were some things that are in conflict with state laws and.
Yeah, to cut you short, Mr. Gross, we were, Mr. Fitzsimmons and I, and I think also Mr. Cohen was a little bit in that, in that discussion. That's one of the things we had, we're discussing just amongst ourselves. Not that we were not listening to the public.
I understand, so you're going to take a step back.
Yes, as far as, well, we talked about continuing the public hearing to next month. I think there's more of an intermediate step to have another workshop on this. We will continue the public hearing. But prior to having our next public hearing, to schedule a workshop so we can further discuss the issues that were, you know, that were mentioned tonight. Certainly, one of the ones that, you know, thinking about it when you mentioned the, you know, a 40 or 45 square foot building, you know, wedged in between residential or whatever that may be. I think, at least in my mind, I still think from, you know, four-story buildings, I don't think that that's totally inappropriate in our downtown area in certain spots. I think we need to, you know, perhaps pick and choose where it's, where that's more appropriate. You know, keeping in mind that when we talk about our downtown area, you know, a very good part of it, we got a cemetery that's a very large, open space. So it's not like you're creating a canyon of buildings. But please continue.
So if you're going to spot zone then. Well, but you're going to say that if one area becomes a CA6, is that going to be allowed, a 45-foot building? And is the area, another one that might be 100 feet away, that's going to be allowed a 45-foot? That's spot zoning. My rules, if you allow one, if they're in the same zone but you don't allow the same thing for both. So, but that's, that's a question. So then that would move out some of the properties that I think Mr. McDonald, myself, and others would like out of the zone. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Vincenzo Diutalli, 8 Taylor Lane. And just a general question on the regulations. And I sort of lost track, I think that was part of the discussion, on the parking.
It wasn't intended.
Okay, it was just, in a general, and maybe this is carried over, when there was, there was a lot of provisions in parking where there may be credits for public and a bike path and so forth. And there was discussion about the reserved parking. And a general question would be how to distinguish between managing a parking lot with a mixed-use development versus reserving. You know, so there'd be the obvious, and just something for clarification, maybe, you know, as we get closer to establish the regulation. There's the obvious, when you have a mixed-use development, just amongst the different uses, and the need to manage. You know, perhaps it's, one of the tenants may have a lot of guests with cars that might be abusing the privilege and that sort of thing. Or maybe one of the commercial tenants within that mixed use. So that's my concern was just, there is a specific reference to public parking, there's a specific reference to reserving, and the managing is a little bit of a gray area. Thank you.
Thank you. And Casey, would you like to expand on that at all? If you, or perhaps clarify that for Mr. Diutalli?
Well, I mean, if we, the parking requirements are the parking requirements and at that point, it's really, I mean, the idea in reducing the parking requirements is that there is other parking available and it's essentially first come, first served as permitted. So I'm not sure how much further we could really realistically go with that. I think we have the requirement that we've talked about where if you have the parking spaces that you're making available to the general public, you have to mark those that way and treat them that way. Beyond that, there was some talk at some point in this discussion about limiting hours for some of those public spaces. That is an option in order to prevent those, that type of thing from happening. But again, that's only as enforceable, you know, that's only enforceable so far.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I guess I'd bring it back to the commission. If there's any comments that commissioners would make on this or what direction they'd like to go. Again, I think that, I think it's fair to say it would be the general opinion of commission members that we hold another, schedule another workshop on this to continue our public hearing on this, but to schedule another workshop. And hopefully, the members of the public that are here this evening or other members of the public that may be interested in this and unable to attend this evening would, would come out and to those workshops. As I mentioned, we've had three workshops on this in the past. So I would encourage everyone, if they have comments, to come out to our next workshop, which would be the next issue, is to see when we wanted to schedule a workshop. And I think it would be not feasible to schedule it sometime this month, given the fact that our town planner is taking a belated honeymoon. So I think we're, I think we're looking into, into the next month. Yeah. In either April or May. And I think that certainly April would be much more, much more appropriate than May.
Your May meeting, or your April, your regular meeting of April is scheduled for April 9th. So probably either the week of the 16th or the week of. So probably either the week of the sixteenth or the week of the twenty-third.
Sixteenth through twenty-third.
It doesn't sound like we're... I don't think we'll be able to get it in, and if you want me to be there before that April ninth.
I think, no, I think we're talking about those two weeks. Gentlemen, what works for us?
The sixteenth is a ZBA meeting that I need to attend, so that would be, I can't...
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Because the kids may be back in school on the sixteenth. It's snow. Right now, it's scheduled for April vacation. I'd opt for the twenty-third if possible.
So twenty-third work for everyone? Let's schedule for April twenty-three.
You know, I will be at a conference on the twenty-third. Sorry.
Twenty-third, is that say Monday, is that correct?
Twenty-third is out, yeah. Twenty-third and twenty-fourth, I'm at a conference. So the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, or the seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth.
May first. There's five Mondays in April.
Or April thirtieth.
How about the thirtieth? Let's schedule it for then, for April thirtieth.
Seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock. And again, we were going to discuss some of the items from Attorney Small's letter to us, but if you could have a discussion, if you have not already had a discussion, if you could have a, you know, discussion with her on some of those items for some clarification, as well as then, I believe, from Mr. Walworth, there were a couple of comments he had, just with respect to just typos and that type of stuff, to kind of clean that up a bit also. I take it then we're gonna need a motion to continue this...
Yes. So we will be, you will be continuing it to your... For now, let's continue it to the May meeting, and then we'll see what the outcome of the April workshop is.
Okay.
So that would be the May fourteenth.
Let entertain a motion to continue this application to our May fourteenth meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission table to our May fourteenth meeting, the zoning text modifications submitted by PCC for section 4.26, Town Center District.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Moving on. Our next item on our agenda, that's item number three, it's zoning map amendment, PNC for the Town Center. And again, Mr. Monarazzo, if you would please read the legal notice and note all correspondence.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice. Item 902-18, zoning map change to change the following properties from their existing zoning designation to the newly drafted Town Center TC District, as specifically shown on the map filed in the Office of the Town Clerk, Town Hall 45 South Main Street, 2-168 North Main Street. The proposed map change is available at, and any questions may be directed to, the Planning and Zoning Department, Town Hall 45 South Main Street, or at 203-294-2090. The proposed map change in its entirety is also filed in the Office of the Town Clerk, 45 South Main Street, and is posted for viewing on the Town Hall of Wallingford website at www.town.wallingford.ct.us. And this is dated March 6, 2018. And we have a application for change to the official zoning map dated 2/2018. We have a proposed Town Center TC zoning district map. Interdepartmental referral, application 902-18 dated February 14, 2018. This is signed by the Fire Marshal. We have, I believe this is correspondence, from Adam Menzeris to the Town Planner, dated 3/6/18. And we have correspondence from Bob Gross to Casey Costello, Town Planner, dated March 6, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Monarazzo. Also, let me preface this by saying, do not see us taking any action on this map this evening. I think we will, you know, discuss this at our next workshop, but I know there's some individuals that are here that perhaps do want to comment on it. So, you know, with that, before we go out to the public for their comments, I'll ask our Town Planner to just give us an overview as to what this is.
Okay, so this is the proposed location of the actual zone, if it were to get approved, the proposed boundaries of the zone. You'll see the majority of it is essentially within the existing CA six zone, with some extensions that are being proposed. At the last meeting where the commission discussed the potential boundary areas, what we discussed was the, when we did the plan of conservation and development update, part of that discussion was where the, if we were to create a new Town Center zone, where those boundaries should be located. And part of that was based on the public outreach that was done, the survey, and the visual survey that they did at Celebrate Wallingford, and then also the written survey, or the posted survey. And so they made recommendations for sort of the extent of the boundary lines, and some of that involved expanding it a little. We also looked at the electric divisions, boundaries that they use for their electric rate reductions for the towns, for the Town Center area. And so essentially, what the commission decided last time was to sort of incorporate all of those components into the proposed zone. Now, I will say that you have some, as you know, you have some communications in your packets. You, there are some members of the audience here tonight, or members of the public here tonight, that called me or came in to see me and had some concerns about some of their properties that were proposed to be added into the zone. And I think to Mr. Gross's point in the last application, really, the only areas where you're looking at houses at all are within those areas. So areas that are currently CLB, perhaps, where the zone is proposed to be extended. And for the most part, it's one or two properties deep. So I think the concern of sort of us running into that situation realistically is, you know, in actual practice, is less so than what actually happened on the ground under the proposed zone. Now, that being said, I also think the point, and I had this conversation with some of the people that came in to see me, I think that the regulation really envisions a larger, more cohesive development, and certainly more commercially oriented development. So the CLB zone was created to create sort of a buffer between that commercial zone. CLB is the limited business district, and that allows for multifamily or for office within the existing building, provided that it maintains the residential character. There is a provision where you can do some addition and things, but the intention is to really be a buffer between that Town Center commercial zone and the residential zones on the fringes. And so to the point that was raised earlier, to Mr. Gross's point, and also some of the other communications that were in the packets, there is this piece right here on Academy Street, and then there are these two pieces that are on North Main and Academy, which are currently in the CLB zone, are proposed to be incorporated into the CA six. Now, I think from a planning standpoint and a consulting, from the consultant's standpoint, that's where the next street is. So to some degree, it's a natural place to end that boundary. But when we take into consideration what is actually on the ground right now, and especially since the property owners don't want to be included in the zone, that it's probably, I think my recommendation would be to take out this whole chunk here and revert back to the original CA six line. The other point, or the other area that you have a communication in your packet about, where some question was raised, is this area here, along South Colony Road, or South Colony Street in that area. So this is where, this is Quinnipiac, this is South Colony, this is where Stella's Pizza Plaza is, and then you have the Portuguese Club and 65 South Colony, which is where the catering, the carriage house, and there's a yoga studio in there. And then you have Ryman Motors is the last of those, the last two properties in there. The owner of the plaza here has raised a concern, and one that should be discussed, I think, about the parking reduction. So the parking reduction, as you all know, is based on the idea that there is other parking available. There's public parking available, there are shared options. There have been some issues for this particular property owner, or with these particular properties, with some of the adjacent clients of the other adjacent buildings using their parking. So while that's not directly, you know, obviously, our parking regulations don't and can't allow someone to park on someone else's private property, and certainly, that's not the consideration. It does sort of raise the question, and I went, and I went down to this area again today, just to look at it with fresh eyes again, and it does sort of raise the question, is this appropriate, is this area appropriate to be incorporated into the zone that we're, our Town Center zone, where we are reducing those parking requirements? Across the street, there is some parking on Prince Street, but across the street, there isn't really parking for part of the area along the cemetery, there is, but not for all of it. And it does necessitate someone to be willing to walk up to, back up to the crosswalk and cross over and walk back down, which in much of the Town Center, I think, would be fair and appropriate to, in order to have a successful... Part of having a successful Town Center means that not everyone is going to be able to park right in front of the business they want to go to, but it does mean that there should be parking options available for these other areas. So I think that's something worth discussing. I don't have as, you know, I, yeah, I think that's something worth discussing. I think perhaps we should consider looking at that area again. And then generally, this CA area, I think, I do think that's appropriate to add in. This is a straight continuation of the line, as recommended by the consultant that incorporates the housing development there. And the other, oh, the other addition was this is an extension down to North Elm Street, North and South Elm Street, it's currently in the CA zone. Right there now are some multifamily houses here, and there is an office here and an office here. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you. And again, if you could turn off the blinder. All right, at this point in time, I'd like to open up to the public with any comments that they may have on the zoning map, again, or proposed map. Again, as I indicated, this is going to be something we're gonna have a continued discussion on at our workshop, but I know that some people are here this evening specifically for this, so I don't want to close them off. So if there are individuals who would like to come forward and state their comments and/or concerns, please come forward, name an address.
All right, Rob Blanchard, 39 Curtis Avenue. My family has some property on South Orchard Street, and the map shows that you're incorporating the entire cemetery, as well as that block of houses on that same block, into this map. And I'm trying to understand the rationale for including those when the, I think the furthest property on the other side of the street is the television station, and then everything else on that side is all residential, all along Prince Street, all along Spring Street, all along that whole area. So to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to include that block.
Yeah, that's, that was not supposed to be included. It should just be the cemetery, and then the residential, those residential pieces, which, now, you can't see, but the ones down in the corner there should not be excluded.
There's like five properties, plus the properties that are owned by the town who're servicing the cemetery.
Yes, I was noticing that also.
Okay, so those should be excluded.
Those should be removed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I think we will take a motion to continue. Casey, do you have any comment? Were you going to make a comment or no? No, I thought you were going to, I thought you were going to make a comment, I'm sorry. So with that, I'd also entertain a motion to continue our public hearing to our May meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this application submitted by the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission for a zoning map amendment for Town Center to our regularly scheduled meeting in May.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And again, I'd like to thank the members of the public coming out this evening to express their concerns, and I hope that we see all of them, if not more, at our workshop scheduled for April. Moving on. As I mentioned, old business number four, that Ferretti Management Corp., that was not being heard this evening, which now brings us to new business. It's a site plan to retail buildings, Tractor Supply, NERP Holding Acquisition Company, 801 North Colony, and Sixth Beaumont Road. Mr. Monarazzo, if you please, please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have an application 203-18 dated 1/24/18. This is signed by the Fire Marshal. We have a sanitary sewer extension profile map dated, where's the date? Don't see a date on here. Actually, I think there are multiple sections of this, actually, it's a legend. We have a second sheet. Again, I don't see a date on it. And another section of map. Again, no date I can find. An additional section of map. Stamped Tractor Supply Company, no date I can find. Some correspondence dated March 1, 2018. Application 203-18 dated 1/24/18, signed by... Aaron Hare, Environmental Planner. Inner Office Memorandum to Casey Hand, Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated March 1, 2018. Correspondence. From, to Casey Costello, Town Planner, dated... Received January 24, 2018. Some correspondence dated January 24, 2018. Some correspondence dated January twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen. A packet from Solly Engineering dated February ninth, two thousand eighteen, revised March twelfth, two thousand eighteen, referencing traffic impact assessment, and a set of plans dated March seventh, or received March seventh, two thousand eighteen, dated three thirteen eighteen.
That's it?
Just.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. Again, before the applicant introduces themselves, just, I guess, some general comments. As you know, you've yet to receive your Inland Wetlands approval, so therefore, we can't act on this application. Normally, we don't discuss an application prior to the approval from Inland Wetlands. It's my understanding from our town planner, though, that there are several issues that you would like to discuss with us to get the, essentially to take the commission's temperature on certain issues. So I, I'd like to, you can give us a brief overview as far as what your application is, but as far as getting into any great depth, I'd prefer not to do that because we'll do that at our next meeting. I'd like to more focus on those items that you felt you needed to have a discussion with the commission on. So does that make sense for you?
That's very helpful, Mr. Chairman. So I'll make a quick, for the record, my name is Dennis Sanaviva. I'm an attorney representing the applicant with the Sanaviva Law Firm. To my left is Jim Cassidy, our project engineer. To my right, Kevin Solly, who is our traffic engineer. There's reports from both gentlemen as part of your record. Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, the main reason that we've asked to come tonight, and you're correct, the storm postponed the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission meeting, so we're not on until the nineteenth of March, so we do not have that approval as we appear here this evening. But I, I think what we wanted to make most notable and aware to the commission is the fact that this application has been revised in its submission. Initially, as your application and your records show, was for two buildings to be located on a, a semblage of two parcels, eight oh one North Colony Road and six Beaumont Road. It has now been revised to be just the one Tractor Supply building. So just quickly, in the way of the background, it gets four point three seven acres in combined size. The proposal is to construct one building. It's a nineteen thousand ninety-seven square foot tractor supply store, eighty-one parking spaces, a truck delivery area, and also a fenced outdoor sales area, about fifteen thousand square feet to the rear of the building of the proposed tractor supply location. Again, just quickly, Jim Cassidy can give you sort of the issues as we've gone through the site and how it lays presently before you in our updated reports.
Good evening, for the record, my name's Jim Cassidy. I'm professional engineer in principle with the firm of Halcy Pearson and Cassidy located at six thirty Main Street in Cromwell, Connecticut. If it's okay, I'd like to use a remote phone, remote microphone and.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate your time tonight. I'm going to try to be brief as I possibly can, give you a quick overview of the project. As Attorney Sanaviva had mentioned, the property we are looking at actually consists of two pieces. The first one being on the left is eight oh one North Colony Road. It's at the corner of the intersection of North Colony Road, which is off on your left here, or off to the west, and on the southerly side of Beaumont Road, bonded on south by Beaumont. In addition to, we have this piece of property here, which is six Beaumont. Between the two pieces of property, we're looking at a piece of land that's about four point three seven acres, about two hundred and ninety-one feet to frontage along North Colony and about four hundred and seventy-six along Beaumont, presently used for auto repair facility, storage yard is eight oh one. And then this piece looks like it was formerly used as some type of a service station. There's a thirty-five hundred square foot building out front, and it looks like the back portion is presently used as a contractor's yard. We do have a water course, it's off to north. This is the Walmart Plaza, off to the north. And then once again, on the west side is North Colony Road. As Attorney Sanaviva had mentioned, what we're here for tonight is to seek site plan approval to develop this with this point of just one building. The original application we put in was for two buildings on the site itself. Again, this is Beaumont on the bottom. We're looking at building, one building with a footprint of nineteen thousand ninety-seven square feet. This would be a new retail store known as Tractor Supply. If no one's familiar with what Tractor Supply Company is, it's a retail operation that its purpose is to cater to what we call gentleman farmer, small farming, small farm operation, a person that has a larger piece of property and needs supplies to support that farm. In a Tractor Supply store, you can buy anything from implements for tractors, lawn mowers, log splitters. You can buy clothing, apparel, boots. You can buy equestrian supplies, food for animals, hardware, small tools. So their theme is, their motto is to supply what you need out there. So on the site plan, you'll see that we have this brown rectangle. Again, this is a store. Originally, we're looking at having another retail store out here with a footprint of seventy-two hundred square feet. The tenant was unknown. It was causing a bunch of issues, so we decided to take that off the application for this time. In addition to, off to the north here, you see this large gray area. This area is an area we call an outside display area, has a footprint of about fifteen thousand square feet, is circumference with eight-foot-high chain link fence. This is an area where we have project products that are larger, that you can't fit into the store, that customers would purchase, such as, again, implements for tractors, brushhogs, Harley rakes, plows, those type of things. In addition to, you'd find sections of corralling for fence that come in twenty-foot sections, hay, and also like wood pellets for stoves. There will also be a thousand-gallon propane dispensing unit on the pad. This is for sale of propane if your customer comes in with an empty container. They bring the propane container to this dispensing area. They go into the store, make the purchase, the sales rep would come out and actually fill them up, similar to the way you used to do with the old hardware stores rather than having the, what are called pre-filled canisters. You would buy at your local gas station or something like that, or some of the local hardware stores. This would be an actual dispensing unit, so someone would fill it up. For access to the site, we're looking at having a driveway approximately two hundred feet from the intersection, North Colony, up Beaumont into the site. This first driveway provide access to the, what I call it, the major parking lot. This is the parking lot that the customers would use, which would be located in the front of the store. This parking area consists of about seventy-three parking spaces. We are looking at having a second driveway down towards the easterly end of the property. This driveway's purpose is driveway is for access to the rear of the building. This is where our delivery trucks, our tractor trailers would come in. When you come into the site, you'll see this larger paved area to the rear. This is to allow a tractor trailer to actually come in, flip around, pulled out this way, back into loading dock and be able to load into the back of the store. In addition to, we're looking at having additional eight parking spaces. We anticipate these parking spaces would be utilized for employee parking. So for you, for total parking on the site, you're looking at a total of eighty-one parking spaces. Per year zoning regulations require seventy-six point four, so it would be slightly over what's actually required. In addition to, there's a sidewalk area out in front of the building. This is an area that we call a seasonal, permanent sidewalk display area. This is an area where products such as the log splitters, lawn mowers, snow blowers, those type of items are would be displayed, seasonal items. And then off to the north here, you'll see another crosshatch area. This is a area we call a permanent trailer display. They do sell what we call landscape trailers. If everyone sees like a residential, short, black trailer, we don't sell big box trailers, do not big tractor trailers, just like a ten to like a twenty-foot landscape trailer would be stored in these areas. If I flip over, again, I've kind of highlighted these different areas. So once again, the yellow areas, the area we call the outside, outside display, where the larger products are stored. The area in green along the front of the store is the seasonal display area, your lawn mowers, your snow blowers, your, your log splitters. And then the pink area is the area for the permanent trailer display. What I did, I don't know if you can see it on this photo, but I took a couple aerial shots of some other tractor supplies we have done in the past. This site is down in Guilford, Connecticut. So this is the parking area in front of the building. I have an area outlined in green on this plan. This represents the sidewalk display. The area outlined in yellow represents the outside display, and then way off on the right-hand side, you can see the trailer display. Similarly, this is a store we did in Vernon, Connecticut. Once again, you can see the yellow area is the outdoor display area, and you can see that there's a bunch of brushhogs in here, there's corralling for fence along this wall. These are actually wood pellets, they're in this area, and there's some fence in the center section of this also. The way the circulation of the site works, customers once again come through the first driveway, they can park within the parking lot in front of it. You will notice that there's three elongated angle spaces in this area here. What happens is if we have a customer with a larger vehicle or a vehicle with a trailer on it, they can pull into these spaces. If they make a purchase of one of the larger products within the yellow area, they can go into the store, make their purchase, the sales rep actually can come out, open the gates, they could pull their vehicle into the side yard display area, there's a driver right through the center of it. They can be loaded up within the yellow area, and then there's another gate at the backside that gets opened up, and then they could continue on their way. So all that loading actually happens within the, the yellow area. The building itself, it's a one-story building. This is the prototypical building. So this is the front of the building being a hundred and twenty-five feet, four inches wide. It's a split-faced concrete block building. The bottom portion is painted, painted a, we'll call it a off-brown, with the upper portion being a painted beige. You'll see these gray areas, what they use is a galvanized corrugated steel siding to kind of stay into the farming theme. So there's a gable on the front of the building that pops out. This would be a corrugated metal siding, and then there's these two awnings that are over the front walk area where you have that sidewalk display, and then you have a storefront glass along the center section. And then you also have this band of red, safety red, and that's the Tractor Supply color with a sign that's mounted to the front gable, and then some accent lights over the front sign to help light it and to enhance the appearance of the front sign.
You know, I, I appreciate the detail that you're getting into, but again, as I mentioned, this is going to be continued, and the reason why we put it on our agenda this evening was because we were, at least it was indicated to us that there were a few items that required discussion and input from the commission. I'd like to get to those items, if you would please.
That's where, yeah, that's what I'm going to jump to now.
Okay.
Sorry. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, but I think a couple of the concerns. First of all, we received all those comments, I've been through the plans, I've made the revisions. There's a couple that seem to still be of concern. Number one, when we talk about this front parking area, there's a comment that, is there any way we can lower the grade so we don't need, we don't have as much filling? And one of the issues we're having, if you take a look at the topography along this norway boundary line, it kind of drops off. There's actually an AT&amp;T line that runs off our site just to the north. So it's like a little bit of a ravine between us and the AT&amp;T line, and there's one spot here in particular where the grade kind of drops down. So when I'm grading out this area, I'm basically taking from the edge of the parking lot down to the property line, primarily a two-to-one slope. Until I get to this spot right in here, I can actually not achieve a two-to-one slope in that area. So what I was looking at doing is putting a one, one point five to one riprep slope. Now, your regulations call that we have a two-to-one slope, so I can't achieve that. So looking at it, you know, we've done this many times, we've gone with a steeper slope, doing slope stabilization to achieve that steeper slope. If that's not going to be allowed, what we had to do is we had to put a small section of retaining wall in there instead. So Casey asked me to bring that up to see the feel of the commission, if that would be acceptable, or to go back and put a retaining wall in, or do we need to take a look at lowering the grade some more so we can have a two-to-one slope in there? In addition to, one of the comments we received from engineering, go back to another plan, was the interconnection between the two parking areas. You have two very separate parking areas, you have seventy-three spaces out front, we have these eight out and back. This back area, its main attention is for loading and unloading a product into the store and also for allowing customers to come through. We did throw eight spaces out here feeling, feeling they could be overflow or they can be utilized by employees. But there, you'll see, if anyone's in this parking lot, to actually get to this parking lot, you would have to come out to the road. There was a recommendation that we bring a drive aisle down the north side of this area, shoving the whole building over closer to the property line. The issue with that is that we have this trailer display for a tractor trailer or any larger vehicle to be able to make that maneuver around here was impractical. We can't actually make that maneuver. Our thought is that this is a totally separate and distinct area for Tractor Supplies to use for primarily loading and unloading. If in the events, which I've never seen occur, Tractor Supply does go out and there is another use that needs to come in here, that's a higher and a more intense retail use, again, the Tractor Supply, we do not utilize a lot of parking, seventy-four space, seventy-three spaces would be more than adequate. But if you do get that use in, that's a higher and more intense use, this concrete pad off to the side can always get converted to an additional parking area with a drive aisle through it to make that interconnection between the two. By doing that, you pick up an extra thirty spaces in that area, and you do have that connection if you were to need it. But again, I'm trying to keep this separate, so this is just for the purpose of loading and unloading of the Tractor Trailers, and I can keep the general public out of, out of that back area. So I think that was the two major concerns we had, Casey, that you want me to bring up.
Yeah, I think the other thing I just wanted to, a couple other things that I wanted to sort of run by the commission. One is, you may have seen in the packet, I commented about the, the front, the stormwater basin in the front, and that my sort of recent concern from some other stormwater basins we've had in town that have been in front yards, and specifically the one in front of the Starbucks development, it's very steep, or it's very deep, and it's filled with stone, and there's nothing, there, there's no like protection around it, and I, I have been thinking about it, and there's, there's another one actually at the end of Beaumont, the other end of Beaumont, across from the pool, that, that is similar. And so I'm starting to have concerns about those basins in terms of just, somebody's going to fall in them, or somebody's going to go off the road or something. So I asked if they would, if they could consider any, A, that they would guarantee, or would agree that they understand that it cannot be stone, that it has to be landscaped, you know, landscaped, which they have, and B, if they would consider any safety measures, or maybe if it would be possible to make it a little bit shallower. So I think they were talking about the potential for putting some railing, it shows on those plans, some railing in the vicinity of the parking spaces, and I think we wanted input from the commission about kind of the extent of that that you would be interested in.
So this basin, the only thing, one thing I see that's a little bit different than the Starbucks is Starbucks is right up against the sidewalk. This one is about twenty feet off of the sidewalk, so you do have a green area, you do have a lawn area between this. We've already accommodated a guide rail along the edge of these parking spaces, down the side and wraps around the corner. I could extend it across the face of the basin if it's the commission's desire. I cannot make it shallower because I have an outlet control here, and I have a very minimal slope from the outlet into the basin. That's controlling the bottom elevation of this basin, so I really can't make it any shallower than it is.
But again, you've agreed, as far as the basin, not to have the stone in there to have that.
It's proposed to be landscaped, it's indicated on the plans.
It would be landscaped, and then you would loop, again, the guardrail.
We could set the guardrail around it, sure.
Yeah, and, and there are a few, there are, some of the street trees are between the basin and the road, so we think that the, the sort of railing on the side would be acceptable, but I just wanted to sort of get input.
How do commission members feel about that? I think that works for us. The, you know, again, is the area as far as, Casey, you're, any comments concerning interconnecting the, the parking lots?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with the comments, and I, I think one of the concerns that maybe that comment stems from, if not, maybe not the only reason, but the thing that I keep sort of coming back to is you have such a large swath of pavement behind, in that area, behind the Tractor Supply. And Rob and I have talked about this, the town engineer and I have talked about this a couple of times, and our understanding is that's what you need for the turning movements for the.
So that's what I was trying to get at, you know. So that's what I was trying to get at, you know, I need to bring a WV sixty five, so wheelbase sixty five in the back here. Make a complete loop, complete U-turn around here, be able to pull out towards this driveway, back into a loading dock, loading ramp here. If I were to put a driveway down the sideways, down the side. To be able to come down here, get around that corner of the building, I'd be clipping. The side yard display, trying to make that maneuver, I couldn't make that maneuver, I would have to push the building so far over. To actually be able to make that maneuver, I'd be adding a lot more pavement here than I would ever have in the back here. This is actually requiring less pavement than we would have if we had to go down the side, I couldn't do with a twelve foot wide driveway. I would probably need a twenty four foot wide driveway to make the maneuver and I would need an additional ten feet from there to the side yard display area.
Again, any comments from commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, yeah. Looking at the site, I was at the site on Saturday, I. I've always been in favor of an interconnection and this is an internal connection. I thought about it, you know, relation to as you were talking. Having been to, and again, it's not comparable, but whether it's Home Depot or Lowe's, which are further down the road, you can drive around that entire parcel. You could drive around the entire parcel of of. Walmart to a certain extent because the two access. I'd rather see this connect and I understand what you're saying, but the picture you showed of the one in Guilford shows one lot. So because it's such a large lot and it is a large area, I'd I'd like the two gray areas to connect, but that's just my opinion.
Other commission members? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, when you were talking about that, my first thought on the on the parking area to the right was. You know, it seemed like it was just, you know, for your trailers and some places, if you were gonna have signage saying. You know, this is not a public access to that parking.
We can label, we can sign this one as truck access only and label these parking spaces as employee parking spaces.
Would that work for you, Mr. Cohen? Rather than the interconnect?
Yeah, I, that would work for me.
Okay, other commission members?
I think it's adequate the way it is.
Let's try it. I think the general consensus is from the commission. By labeling that truck access only and then by indicating that those parking spaces would only be for employees. I believe that 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 would be acceptable to the commission.
And then there was a the concern also.
I know, that were to the retaining wall. Casey, if you please, just rather Mrs. Hahn, give us some overview on that. And as far as what comments we may or may not have from engineering on that place.
Okay, the. The, as Mr. Cassidy indicated, the regulation is the two to one, so. There's not really any. Your regulations don't really allow for much. For for another option per se, so it's, I think it's really a matter of. Either looking at the grading or putting in the retaining wall, I did talk to the town engineer about that also. He agreed, he didn't think that the, he didn't have an objection to doing the retaining wall. I mean, the alternative would be for them to seek some sort of variance.
A what?
A variance.
Say that again?
If, you know, if. If there were a real reason why why that couldn't be done. So I think it's really whether the commission is, you know, if the commission is comfortable with the. The general grading on the site, then I think they're, I'm presuming their preference is is to look at the retaining wall.
Yeah, I think those would be your options, either the, either the two to one or the retaining wall. That seems to be acceptable to our town engineer.
That's fine, we'll put a retaining wall in.
Good.
So one other item, you did receive a new traffic study this evening. Again, just because the original traffic study included a seventy two hundred square foot building, we had the traffic study revised. I do have Kevin Sully, our traffic engineer with us this evening, I don't know if you have any questions.
At this point in time, we have not, we've just received the traffic study, I don't believe any commission members have had any time to review the traffic study. Between seven o'clock and now, so quite candid, I think it would be pointless to discuss it at this meeting.
That's fine, I appreciate your your meeting with us tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it's helpful as we. Hopefully we're gonna be back next time with a plan that will be ready for action.
Again, I see a member of the public out there, I'm not sure if he would like to comment on the application, if you'd like to come forward, please name an address.
Good evening again, Tim Ryan, Economic Development Commission. We have an opportunity to have a very strong national retail brand come to Route Five, a retail corridor. Like anything, it seems today, this is a culmination of eighteen months of working with the broker, Mr. Darling, to try to locate. A acceptable and workable. Site on Route Five for for tractor supply, which again, if you're not familiar with it, it's a very strong national brand and very clean brand. I draw your attention to what's there now. And we know that this will be a vast improvement to that area. So and the economic, these gentlemen did come before the Economic Development Commission several months ago. I made a similar presentation to what they made to you tonight. And I'm here on behalf of the commission tonight to say that the commission supports the application and completely. So I know that there are some nuances to work out, I simply ask you to. To do your best to work them out because we look forward to welcoming the brand to town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point in time, I assume the applicant has no further comments to make, I would enter. Okay.
Briefly, I know you, because I brought this up a couple of times, I know you mentioned. Sort of the items, the outside storage items and that those were the subject of a variance that was approved. I just want to make sure. Did you list everything that would potentially be stored outside, just because I want us to all be on the same page about that because it's unusual for.
Yeah, so again, in the outside display area, there's going to be. Larger items that you cannot get into stores such as implemented tractors, now, once again. We don't sell tractors, they don't sell tractors, they sell attachments for them, so you can get brushhogs, york rakes, plows. Mower decks. You know, larger items, again, a brush hog weighs about eight hundred pounds, so you're not gonna bring it to store, they're up to five feet wide. You also have corralling for horses, fencing for horses, a section of fence for a horse is four feet wide, twenty feet long. Again, and they're tube steel, so it's too big to bring into the store. You're gonna have wood pellets out there, you're going to have bales of hay out there, you're gonna have box wire fence out there. In addition to, as I mentioned, there is a propane dispensing unit, if everyone remembers going to like the old. U-Haul or to the hardware store where you went out behind and they had the thousand gallon canister of propane. That was sitting up on pedestals out in back and you would have to bring the canister there, go into the store, make your purchase. And then the representative would come out and actually connect up and refill your can. Rather, or your your tank, rather than having the changeable tanks like you would have a. Home Depot or those type of places today. There is also, again, fencing, there's pieces of split rail fence. So those larger items that you cannot fit into the store are the items that are gonna be out in that area. In the front walk area, you're gonna have those seasonal items, you're going to have lawn mowers. Log splitters, snow blowers, there are ATVs, they do sell all utility vehicles. Sometimes they'll sell quads, sometimes you also have some wood pellets out in that area. Dog kennels, dog houses, Christmas trees, those type of products are out on that front walk area. And then the only other area is that pink area I showed you, that's permanent trailer display, that's just trailers, straight trailers are displayed in that area. Beyond that, that's that's the products that are displayed outside. I know there's a question about fertilizer, fertilizer is typically kept in the store, fertilizer is not something you want to keep out in the elements, you want to keep it dry and safe inside the store.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point in time, I entertain a motion to continue this application to our April meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the site plan application submitted by NERP holding an acquisition to our April meeting.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Gentlemen, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, if you wouldn't mind just waiting until the end of our meeting, if you would please, because I think we're going to breeze right through the rest of our agenda. And Mrs. Hahn, if you'd please take us through the rest of our agenda.
Yes, okay, it's item number six, the extension for twelve Old Colony Road. That's a special permit from. Two thousand and nine for filling and. Material storage and they are looking for a one year extension to April ninth, twenty nineteen, we have no objections.
Do we have a motion for the extension?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the extension as recommended by the town planner.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, moving on.
Okay, Docker Drive, that's not ready yet. Number eight is water main replacement, it's an eight dash twenty four referral. From the Water and Sewer Division for improvements for water main replacements on Ward Street, South Orchard Street and South Whittlesey, there is a map in your packet, it's showing the area. So you need an, the motion needs to be to recommend approval or denial to the council.
Do we have a motion to either recommend or approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission recommend. The water main replacement submitted by the Water and Sewer Division for Ward Street, South Orchard Street. And South Whittlesey Avenue as requested by the, by Seth Lance for the Wallingford. Public Utilities Engineer Planner.
Do I have a second on the recommendation?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, moving on.
Okay, number nine is not ready yet. And. Number ten. Oh, here's the attachment. Okay, number ten, they are recommending a reduction to thirty nine thousand four hundred dollars. And engineering has indicated that they are okay with that, so we are recommending the reduction.
Do we have a motion on the recommendation of the reduction in the bond?
Mr. Chairman, as recommended by the town planner and requested by the town engineer. I recommend a reduction in the bond being held for the subdivision one oh one dash sixteen, three fifty Church Street, Galesville. To the amount of three thirty nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, moving on.
Okay, six oh five North Elm, that was a subdivision that you recently approved. Well, relatively recently and they have come back, they want to modify the lot lines. So normally that would just be considered a lot line revision and it wouldn't. Require any sorts of approval, but because it was a recently approved subdivision, I. I felt like you should at least have some eyes on it before I made any, took any action on it. So I'm looking for you to see whether or not you have any questions or concerns, essentially what's happening is. They're moving the. The basin was originally on. One of the lots and they're moving it to be part of the other, essentially the other lot. Just because of who's owning the various lots and who is willing to take maintenance responsibilities.
Do you have any concern with?
No, I've reviewed it, the town engineer has reviewed it, we did, we did require them to change all the references, they had to change all the easement references and the maintenance references, so those are all changed on there. Everything still complies, so there's nothing I see that's problematic.
And again, you mentioned the town engineers reviewed it and concurs.
Yep.
Any, any commission members with any questions, comments on this? Seeing none, I guess I, I guess I will entertain a motion to. Approve the amendment or the change in the lot lines.
Mr. Chairman, as as requested by the applicant, I move that the commission approve. The revision to the subdivision submitted by Dean Attali at six oh five North Elm Street to revise existing Lot Four and property and Lot Five. Lot lines as submitted on the plan.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, moving on, we'll just skip right over election of officers as we always do.
Okay. ZBA decisions of last month, the ZBA actually denied both applications which were related, it was for a very, very large. Garage motor home storage type building, so those were both denied. And I believe you will see a new application at some point. Okay, for the March meeting, it's a, it's a variance for a porch. Zoning enforcement log. As usual, I'll generally leave it open to you, but I will say, Mr. Fitzsimmons, I did talk to the law department and I do have. I do have a report for you, so I won't, I'll send it out to you all. Generally, the two pending cases we have right now are the Bristol Myers. Case regarding the regulation change, that's not an enforcement issue, but that's an, that's awaiting. Some decision pending there now that the property has been sold and. And the other one is the the winery regulations and we're waiting for a decision on those. And actually, in reviewing our. Referrals to the law department, most of them are sort of back in in our court right now and a few, there were two I realized that we had actually addressed and removed, so I will get that out to you, but I did follow up on that. And then otherwise, I will leave it open for questions.
Anyone questions? Seeing none? Next item.
Finally, we have the annual report, there were a few corrections made from last month. So it's, I'm looking for either acceptance or additional comments.
Just for me, just additional comments, these are just very minor. On the second page on C.
Yep.
One, two, three, on the third line down where it talks about nine thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Could you just put a comment between the nine and the seven?
Yes.
And then just one last thing.
Sure.
On the. On the final page on nine. Where you say Amy Torres continues to be a strong asset for the planning and zoning department and the town. As a whole, in her role as part time, that just seems awkward wording, if you could just, I think to me, it just sounds better if you say. You know, she, an asset to both the planning and zoning. Department and town in her role as.
Yeah, okay.
Just eliminate those other three words.
Okay.
Anyone else with any, any comments? Seeing none, I guess we'll, we need a motion to approve this, is that correct?
Yeah, to accept it.
Yeah, to, do I have a motion to accept the annual report for twenty seventeen?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the annual report for twenty seventeen as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And with that, I believe we're at the conclusion of our meeting.
Yes.
And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned, have a good evening.